We live, Luke?
Hey, Chris.
Okay, welcome to the November 10th Board of Selectmen's meeting. The board is just coming out of a short paperwork review. Now, everybody rise for the pledge legions.
Pledge legions.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up is the review and approval consent items. In this evening's consent folder, we have the accounts payable manifest for November 4th for $1,146,984.28. For November 11th, we have $61,409.73. We have a payroll manifest for November 6th for $72,728.87. And for November 13th for $67,228.88. We also have a purchase order for Continental Resources, which is a subscription for the network for $13,275.51. I would like to make a motion to pull that, the last one from the consent, so we can have a discussion outside of the consent.
Second.
Motion made by myself, seconded by Mr. Leary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 4-0-0. So the remaining items are just the AP manifest and payroll manifest. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some moved.
So, motion by Ms. Plansky, seconded by Ms. Queenen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 4-0-0. Request for additional items or other business? So we'll just have the PO request laid into the bottom of the agenda. Alright, so not hearing anything else for additional business or other business. First, public input will be no earlier than 6:45 this evening. Next on to our business agenda, approval of minutes for October 27th. Has somebody had an opportunity to review? And if so, take a motion to approve or change.
Why do you always look at me? Sure, huh? Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for October 27th, 2025.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leary. So, motion made by Ms. Queenen, seconded by Mr. Leary. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 4-0-0. Second is the approval of non-public minutes from session one, October 27th. Have you had an opportunity to read it? Any changes? If not, a motion to approve. A motion made by Mr. Leary to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Plansky. Any discussion? No. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 4-0-0. Second is the approval of non-public minutes for session two on the same date, October 27th. Do I have a motion or amendments?
Some moved.
Motion made by Ms. Plansky. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Queenen. Any discussion? No. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0-0. Alright, next up is the volunteer policy and application proposed. This is our second read, and I believe some folks here to talk about it, but I will turn the floor over to Ms. Kleiner, who would like to take it. Introduce Catherine and go from there.
So, this is a second read. There has been drafts that have been posted to a page on the selectmen's portal, which is, all the policies that are in draft form are on that page. That page has been shared with all of the boards and commissions. Catherine, our intern, has made some changes based on the feedback we received from the first read, and I'll let Catherine speak to that. Catherine?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for being here. Not sure how many people are here this time. Thank you all for being here. The first time I read over this policy, there was definitely a lot of adjustments that needed to be made, so I just want to go through some of those. But I do also want to say that today, we did kind of a last-minute editing, so there were a few edits that we talked about making today as well, so I will discuss those.
Yeah, Catherine, unfortunately, you're cutting it in and out for some reason.
Yeah.
You may want to try turning off your video and see if that helps. Just stop video.
Alright, yeah, does that work?
It's still chopping. Yeah, if you, do you have her phone number?
I do.
We can call you on the phone if that'll make it easier.
Yeah.
And then Kim can display anything you would normally display if you have something to display.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Hey, Luke? Can you hang up the WebEx? In the WebEx?
Alright, is this better?
It is.
Okay, I'm gonna just turn off the video.
Well, I just, you can, it's gonna end anyway, so you can just hang that up if you'd like.
Okay.
Alright, cool.
Okay, so, okay, great. So just to, yeah, I wanted to talk about some of the changes that were made from the first read. If, I don't know, Kim, if you want to pull up the second draft? If not, no worries, I can just talk about it either way.
The town volunteer policy?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Kim's pulling it up so we can see it, so you can go ahead and talk about it.
Okay, perfect. So, one of the things that was a concern to people was the difference between a town volunteer and a short-term volunteer. We had it as like working to events, maybe do a town volunteer. We changed that a little bit and made a town volunteer as someone who's appointed by the Town Board of Selectmen to perform specific roles without receiving compensation besides reimbursements for any of their own money spent. That includes committee and subcommittee members. And then, a short-term volunteer is someone who offers their time and services to a charitable organization or government entity without receiving benefits for events without ongoing commitment. So, we just made it a lot more broad. The people who consistently are volunteers are still considered a short-term volunteer. Mr. Brunnheim, when you talked about getting some more clarification on that, so I'm definitely open to some discussion there.
Okay.
And, an edit we are planning to make, if you go to incoming volunteers, that first paragraph, I believe Christine sent some, sent a letter, and there's a sentence that says, "This application includes personal information." We're going to change personal to demographic, just so it doesn't sound as scary and like, it's really just like name, address, et cetera. Another change that is going to be made is the next paragraph. I wrote state law RSA 41:9. That was a mistake. I think I just found that in insurance documents, but it's really RSA 170E:56. That is the correct one. And so, in that paragraph, we also changed the issue of background checks. I know a lot of people are like, why do we need background checks for every volunteer? So this is just going to be people working with elderly and children, because that's the population that we really want to protect. And so that will be going through Litchfield as well as the state police. And then, oh, another thing that we also touched upon was that volunteer application. A lot of people were worried about having to fill out an application every time that you wanted to sign up for an event, but we made it so that you only have to fill out the forms once a year. And that is so in case an emergency contact changes, or your address or something changes, that we're keeping up with it, but not to the point where every time you do an event, you have to refill out this form. And we also created a QR code that can be scanned, so maybe if somebody's hosting an event, like the Christmas event, you can just have a QR code up and it takes two minutes on a Google form. I've shared that with Kim. She doesn't have to show it, but it's the same thing, just on a Google form. And that makes everyone's lives a lot easier having it on your phone, but I would also recommend having a few paper copies of it, just in case. Besides that, some of the other things that were changed is Christine also made a comment. There's still some concerns about the spirit of Litchfield. We did, at the last meeting, kind of decide, declare that they weren't an official subcommittee. So, we wrote on here that unofficial subcommittees or task forces cannot act upon, act on behalf of the town, or make decisions related to town resources. So that's just, kind of like, making sure that they're covered as short-term volunteers compared to the town volunteers. They don't need those background checks if they're not working with children. Yeah, I mean, we had some other small adjustments as well, but I would love to hear some more feedback if you really want to make this policy as great as possible.
So, the only thing I'd like to add is, since, maybe there'd be some misinformation. The town volunteer form that was created, and we're, again, we're labeling town volunteers as those being appointed by the board. So, a member of the RAC Commission, or a member of the Conservation Commission, those that require an action by the selectman. I put it on the portal because I'm not sure that everyone's aware that there's always been a form. There is a form. People fill out a form now, that is much of the same information as Catherine's form. So that started, at least when I came, I, I mean, I know it existed before I came, because I didn't create it.
Assume that's the one that I'd said, signed up for when I did RAC, Conservation.
Right. It says, you know, list three references, and it's your basic information. It's not lengthy, but that has always existed. I think Catherine just put it in a nicer format, and I think that is important, especially for someone who's being appointed by the selectmen, to serve in a role that does have some authority over town resources, right? They have budgets that they are adhering to and things of that sort. That's different.
So, just to call it the volunteer form, there are two forms floating around this town. One is a paper form, which was probably one was referenced, but there's also the online form that does not ask for references. It's never asked for references in the years it's been created.
So, here's what has been happening administratively here. They fill out the online form. It comes in to Town Hall. Donna, Karen, I, someone, sends it to the board that they are asking to be appointed to. They are then interviewed by the board, and after the board comes back and makes a recommendation for them to be appointed, I send them this form. So they're not filling out this form unless they've actually been recommended by the commission or the committee, the longer, more detailed form. And then, before it comes to you folks, I get this back, and it gets posted to your portal.
So, I've been volunteering for this town for 20 years, and I've never provided any references.
That's...
The form I've always filled out was just, I'm interested, and I meant, okay, I'd come in and meet the commission I'm interested in, introduce myself, provide my background, and then they made a decision, which was forward to the board. I wasn't aware that we were actually doing, you know, reference checks at the town administrator office. Because no form that ever was created online before has ever had it.
This is a form that existed when I came, and from what I understood, they were, once it was, they were being recommended. They weren't making the individual fill it out if they weren't being recommended to the selectmen. Not that I've had any of them, those happen either, but this form has been on their portal for approval when they go to appoint, to a committee. And when we say reference checks, at least since I've been here, everyone who has been recommended has had somebody, you know, references that, yeah.
Oh, I get that.
Some of you, or some of the fellow commission members, or, yeah.
Well, logistically, that form needs to get moved off of Google, so we need to talk about that. And we'll just restructure it on the form engine, but otherwise, I'm fine. If the board's okay with collecting that information, you know, I guess it's fine.
I don't remember doing references. I may have. I don't remember that part. I do remember an interview at Conservation. I remember putting my name in, my address, and then it came here, and why I wanted to do it.
That's how I did it, too.
Which was kind of what was important as far as, I mean, if I had been asked for references, I probably would've gave neighbors, you know?
Yeah.
Or other boards I had been on. Shouldn't be too complicated.
I used the paper one, and I had to put in reference.
I did a paper one, too. It was, I think I got it from Terry.
There's been a couple floating paper ones around, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
It depends who you get it from, I think.
Yep, I think I got it from Terry.
So going, going online and making it fill out online makes sense, and maybe there's a second sheet that says, okay, you've been accepted, can you give us some references so we can use the back, if that's, if the board still wants references checked?
Yeah, so it's been really easy because it's generally, if not myself, Karen, if that's scheduling for the board, so I take the opportunity to send them the form, tell them when they're being scheduled for your next meeting, get the form back, and then I'm, I'm ensuring that it's on your portal and they're scheduled. So I am already having some correspondence with the person, because I need to tell them when they're being scheduled, so it's not a heavy lift.
Right, right.
Yeah.
I think I'd like to take the, I think I'd like to take the request for the background check off the application, and use it as a separate form, and put something on here that says, if your position that you're volunteering for, which would not be Conservation or RAC, is not, is working with children, you may be required, or you are, will be required to fill out a backup. And, and take that off of there. It's, I don't think it's a friendly, thanks for coming to volunteer for us thing. I would make it a different form. That's just my opinion.
So it is two separate forms now, but you're suggesting...
This is adding it to it, though, section three on the form that she has up there.
It says that the form is a form that they fill out only if...
It says I authorize the town to do a background check on the information.
This one here.
Gotcha.
I agree.
You agree?
It read more formal this time.
Yeah. I mean, if you're giving the resident, giving the person to reference, then obviously you're... I'd take it off. I'd make the, I'd make it just please check, to be aware that if your position means that you're going to be working with children and the elderly on a regular basis, that you will be subject to background check.
Yeah, subject to, not required.
Subject to.
So the application is between the, how's the, how's the policy look to you folks, though?
Um, the policy, she's mentioned changes, but it's really not in, they're like, not changed on the policy yet. Is that correct?
Right, so some of these were addressed, things that were addressed today.
So this needs to come back, yeah, that needs to come back.
If you look, if you look at the live doc, you'll see it, but you have references, you have access to it through the portal, too, but, but agreed. If we accept the changes, she can finalize and we bring it back again.
And we'll bring it back, okay.
I know we have, this wasn't actually a public hearing of the document, but I hear, I know we have people that speak to it. This, just past 6:45, if everybody's okay with it, open up a public input, and if anybody wants to speak to this topic or add any other feedback, now you feel free to step forward.
Jason Brennan, 23 Aldrich. I've got, I read through this today, and I've got a handful of comments. I don't think anything major. First thing, Mr. Chair, I wish this went out to the commissions. We had to find out about this by going to the portal, and getting the portal, so...
It was sent out to the commi, so let me say it back. My understanding was it was sent to the commissions when we created the portal for your view, to say, this is where this policy's being reviewed and changed, to give you access to what was being developed. But...
I don't recall seeing it, but it probably came through. But it would've been nice, knowing that this is coming up this week, that we would've been reminded on this. Item number two, under definitions, the short-term volunteer definition, I think it needs a little bit of help. It's kind of, it's kind of general right now. I think if you just shoot it to the point and say, someone who offers their time and services to the town of Litchfield, a department, a board, a commission, a subcommittee, so on and so forth, and just make it straightforward, I think that would be good. I'll, I'll leave you guys with these notes.
Okay.
On the second page, there, in the, on the first paragraph, it says, "Any new talent, volunteer must fill out, fill out an application, yada, yada, yada," and then it says, "Their employer has the right to deny the position." I think that should just be stricken from the record. I don't think it's applicable. I don't see that you guys are going to be calling people's employers to see if it's okay to volunteer for the Conservation Commission. I would just wipe that out. It also says in that same paragraph that all volunteers are required to complete a liability waiver form. I think that's fine, but just something that we looked up at the last meeting is that, according to Primex, right here, that all volunteer, it says, "Our volunteer is covered for liability purposes," and it says, "Your public entity's liability coverage is extended to volunteers for covered claims occurring within the scope and course of their official duties." And that's right from, from Primex. I think you gotta take a look at this, because if we're required to do a sidewalk, if we're required to do certain things, and you're injured doing those things, that are your duties, according to Primex, that, that's covered, so maybe we tweak that in here as well, if that is applicable. Number six, it says, "Short-term volunteers," so I'm down on the third paragraph, page two, "are not required to have a background check. They need to fill out a short questionnaire, and emergency contact, and have the volunteer be responsible for their own safety." Again, I would just shoot the arrow straight on that. I would say, and sign a waiver, because it's kind of a little bit, the wording is a little bit confusing.
Oh, and sign the waiver? Okay.
Yeah. It's under short-term volunteers, just so they have to sign a waiver. Under use of subcommittees, second page, I'm not sure this relates to the volunteer policy. I mean, I guess it kind of does, but it starts going into something that I think is not related to the volunteer policy.
Where are you going to?
Under use of subcommittees, on the second, on the second page, the last one down. It says, "Subcommittees may be established for specific events, yada, yada, yada." Does that really relate to the volunteer policy, or should that be somewhere else?
That, that just relates to the volunteer policy, because it needs to, there needs to be a difference between the subcommittees and, like, task forces or unofficial subcommittees, because that does make a difference in different rules for the volunteers.
Gotcha.
But I can probably, I do see what you're saying, the first half of it is a little bit not relevant to the volunteer part, but I do think that the second half of that paragraph is important.
So you're thinking about just striking the first sentence? That paragraph?
The first two sentences, maybe?
Okay.
Which one was that?
On the, under use of subcommittees, the first two sentences, she's thinking about striking all the others.
Maybe tie it into the volunteer thing somehow, it just feels awkward there. And then I have a note, are members of these subcommittees town volunteers or short-term volunteers? Because that would throw them into a different bucket.
Sorry, you said members of the subcommittees, or like, the task forces?
Well, it says, in their use of subcommittees, which we have the spirit of Litchfield here, for example, what I'm asking is, are members of subcommittees a town volunteer, or a short-term volunteer?
I would assume town volunteer.
Correct.
I think short-term volunteers would be someone like doing cleanup for the muck weekend.
And it wouldn't be for a single Christmas in Litchfield event?
So, the spirit of Litchfield, I think we went over this a few times. Spirit of Litchfield is not a subcommittee. In order for someone to be a subcommittee, by law, they are treated the same way as a committee. They must have public agendas, they must have public minutes, they are subject to 91A, and they must include a member of the original committee. You can have groups of volunteers, organized groups of volunteers, which I would say the spirit of Litchfield definitely is, an organized group of volunteers that works with the Recreation Commission, you know, organizing events for the town. But that keeps them separate from 91A. Otherwise, if you call them a subcommittee, they are subject to 91A. So, based on that, they are just volunteers, and they would be short-term. Yep. We don't need to collect all their information, we just want your contact, the, the short-term, just your, on emergency contact, should something happen on town property.
Yeah, and I think if you look at, off the Board of Selectmen, the CIP's a long-term, so it's, they're a town volunteer, because they were, they're a sub of us.
Yeah, and the Energy Committee, right? The Energy Committee is a subcommittee of the selectmen, but they had to be appointed by the selectmen.
It was my understanding that they were a subcommittee, because they act like a subcommittee. There is funding tied to them through the, through the Recreation Commission? I think we, you guys assumed they were a subcommittee, but maybe they were never officially anointed as a subcommittee? I don't, I'll let Chris talk to that.
They don't take, they don't take notice, notes or anything like that. There's no meeting notes, there's no chair.
And there's, there's no rec, no recognition.
And the only reason I'm familiar with it is because of the, is there a chair? Is there a chair of the spirit of Litchfield?
Not an official chair.
Not an official chair? Because we, we have a subcommittee for the 250th. We had to get a chair, we had to get a treasurer, because there's going to be money coming through it. We have to do minutes.
Yep, and they post agendas.
We post agendas.
Yep.
And I think we come up with the whole idea of what spirit is, to kind of separate it, so we're not burdening them on trying to do things to be...
Because you guys, like, will pop up, and you're like a, we're like a pop-up volunteer.
Very seasonal.
Where all of a sudden, there's a need, and you guys just show up, and all of a sudden, you know, magic happens.
Right. Otherwise, anything and everything they do is subject to 91A, and it would all have to be on the town drives. We don't want to go, that, that's silly. That's silly.
You don't want it to be...
So that's why we, totally carved it out, in a sense, and kind of defined it. I know it messes things up, but that's where the use case was, and why we did it.
I had one last one.
Before you want, I got one comment on that. Maybe that 91, whatever, the right to know, should go onto the definition of town volunteer, so we know in the future. You have to keep minutes and all of that. That's where you go.
Needs a chair, it needs a...
See, yeah, I wonder if we should actually have a, hate to say it, a document that actually describes what the committees are and what they're not, and what, what rules have to follow? Because one of the committees are doing their bylaws, they can bring that into their bylaws also as part of a format.
I can go back, I think we had a form like that during the orientation event, but I can go back and grab it and see if that...
I think that'd be helpful, who has to keep minutes, who keeps the money, you know?
It would, because I know that there's been times that there was confusion on boards of...
If you're, if you're charting, if you're going to be charting a subcommittee or a committee, there's, there's a baseline bylaws that would define all of that, and that's what you've got to make sure applies.
I, just one last one. Last paragraph, town funds, second sentence, "All fundraising conducted in association with town-sanctioned activities must be coordinated through a committee," yada, 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 submitted Board of Selectmen. So we do a lot of, does that impact any fundraising that we do for fireworks and all that type of stuff? Now, does it formalize it to the point where it's going, we have to go through hoops to be able to do that?
How are you envisioning the funds coming in? Somebody coming up, and you're saying, I want to do 500... How are you envisioning the funds coming in? Somebody coming up and you're saying, I want to do five hundred dollars for fireworks?
When we do fireworks, we raise three thousand dollars in a span of twenty-four hours. And it's done with Venmo and we come in here with a check and donate that check. And I just wanted this right here, I don't know if it throws a wrinkle into that. Because it says, all fundraising conducted in association with town sanctioned activities. For which the Christmas in Litchfield is, must be coordinated through a committee or directly to the board of selectmen.
I believe I got this from our town cash receipts policy.
You're correct, Catherine.
I don't know if it's needed.
So you, I, I don't. So the way I looked at the fireworks was, in the example, a private citizen was raising money to give to the town or give to Spirit of Litchfield to actually have that. No money ever touches the town. It goes through the town. So.
That is true.
I, I don't, we wouldn't want to change that, would we? I mean, I don't see any reason why we would have to. I think the concern would be as if someone said, hey, I donated, you know, five grand. You only spent three. Where's the other two? That, that may be the issue.
So as far as we're, we are concerned, the money comes in from one individual because we don't have a list of all the individuals nor do, nor are we asking.
Correct.
And it's donated and it turn, and then in turn paid out to the fireworks. So, I mean, it is subject to ninety-one A because it is town, it is going through the town coffers. But we need to make sure that.
Ninety-one A doesn't bother me one bit at all.
No, it shouldn't.
We need to ensure that we are adhering to the cash receipts policy of the town, which is, does. That does, that regulate everyone.
Perfectly fine, but I'll just, if you read this, all fundraising conducted with associated of town sanctioned activities. Which that is, must be coordinated through blah, 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 blah.
But I think it does. It goes through, I mean, rec approves the fireworks.
Nope.
You don't approve the fireworks happening? You should.
To your property, you need to approve it.
To your property, you need to. Yeah, I'm pretty sure you guys did. In one of your meetings, you at least gave permission.
Just strike it.
Yeah. Well. Yeah. I'll get it too.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you, Jason.
In something like fireworks. He moved to strike, Mr. Chair. Exit stage, Lynn.
Name and address, please?
We're double teaming.
Chris Burns, Forest on the Street. Chair of the rec committee.
Janice Paris, nineteen Woodhawk Way.
So I think, I think a lot of the same concerns and questions I had, rec by Jason. I think, and I think there was some positive here after the last meeting, you know, some things that were taken into account. So thank you for your work on that. One thing I did want to point out is on the second page, under the, the item about the coaches, so. The rec committee has already taken steps to, to ensure that. We've added the checkbox to the application for the facility and field request. Asking that the coaches and volunteers are background checked. And that's something that we're looking for now when we get those approvals or when we get those requests.
So, Chris, I'm sorry, one second. I know I put down in my feedback was how are we tracking that? Is the town receiving the acknowledgements that have been done? And does the town have access to those records?
We have not been asking for that, no. We're just, we're just getting confirmation that it's being done. For right now, anyway. I mean, I, I think that went live before, right before our last meeting or right after our last meeting, so. It's still hidden, but. If that's something we need to collect, then.
I, I don't know. I just don't know how we, we don't want to collect it, right?
Yeah, so what, I did go back after the conversation and I spoke to legal. The, the organization, because they are not volunteering directly for the town. They are volunteering for an organization. That organization does not have to share that background check with us.
Can they share that it's been done?
But they are in.
That's what the checkbox is asking.
They are saying that it's been done. So if there's an issue, that now makes them, puts a liability upon them.
And we have, we have that checkbox.
I like to hear that the short-term volunteers only have to fill out that form once a year. Now they think the QR code is helpful for sure. Being able to send that out ahead of time, not have to collect it onsite, you know, right before the event starts.
Yeah.
I think that's all positive.
Yeah, well, part of that is, I have a question. A lot of times, you know, the Christmas event is huge. And we have problems where somebody doesn't show up. And then I literally just go around and say, hey, want to help out? And I mean, they're not going to have time to fill out a form or anything. I mean.
Is that even if it's like a link on your phone?
I'll be honest with you, if I can get somebody to volunteer, they're not going to want to take the time to do that. They're probably going to say, forget it, you know, and walk away.
Yeah, and that, and that totally makes sense, but I, we do need people's emergency contacts when they volunteer. So I'm not sure. I do, like when you're pulling people in the middle of an event, how that really works. I don't know, Kim, if you can speak on that?
I, I actually, if some, if I pick somebody out of the crowd that, you know, agrees to help that night. I take their name down, obviously, and their phone number and email. So I mean, I do have that information about them. Usually I just throw it in my phone or something.
Is there a way you can add one question to it? If you drop dead here, who do I call? Who's your emergency contact?
I mean, would that suffice or do you still need an official form filled out?
Well, so, I mean, the QR code was nice because it came over. If something happened, right, God forbid. And you, you know, had to tell Chris that there's been an accident, this has happened, blah, blah, blah. Chris has to let Karen or I know immediately because we have to alert Primex. And Primex was going to want that emergency contact information because their claims adjuster is actually going to reach out to that person.
Well, I, I would have that information myself on my phone.
And as long as, as long as you could get that information to, to Chris and, and he can get it to us or you can get it to us directly, you know, I mean.
All right.
How to get ahold of us.
I was just worried about having to fill out a form on the fly, so.
Yeah, if it's a, I think they're one offs or two offs.
Just, yeah, just add an emergency contact, just in case.
I mean, it could be, it could be as simple as like the, the QR code on your phone. They scan it and you already have their information.
Yeah, if they, yeah, if they can do that.
They don't have to fill anything out like a Venmo type thing.
Right, right. Yeah, you can usually put phones together and get information. Well, a lot of my questions had to do with the whole different committee type things because Chris and I were talking and we weren't sure exactly if I was a subcommittee or not. But if we're an unofficial subcommittee, I'm assuming even though I'm there all the time doing stuff, I'm still a short-term. Okay, all right. So that actually, that actually helps. And gets rid of a few of my questions. One of the things I wanted to follow up with, we use students. At all of our events and that is not addressed at all in here.
In, in the form, in the, the form that has the QR code, there is a quick question saying like if you're. I don't remember the exact wording. You might have it up there, but it's like if you're under eighteen. There is like a checkbox for being under eighteen. I know that.
Yeah. Okay, and then does the form, like, I mean, I get twenty or thirty kids that show up. And it's never necessarily the ones that signed up. It's somebody said, oh, I brought my friend Suzie with me, you know? So I don't necessarily have all their information. I mean, I try to get from, like from Campbell, I try to get name, a list of names with at least phone numbers.
Cause they get some kind of credit, right? They get some kind of credit, hours for sophomore or senior project or something like that?
Yeah, exactly.
So that means a list does exist of these kids somewhere and.
I, I think all the forms trying to do is who their guardian is and it's basically emergency contact details too. So if you have, you know.
Okay.
There is, it, it's a checkbox. I wish I could make it.
It, there's a checkbox.
I see it. I see the barrier.
Figure out how to get it larger, but, and it just says, I am under the age of eighteen years old. And if you're under the age of eighteen, the name of your guardian.
Guardian and phone number.
We can contact your guardian.
I could be wrong, but like speaking of the college kid who just got out of high school, like if I'm volunteering for an event, I have my phone on me. If you had just like the paper of the QR code or on your phone or whatever, it takes probably thirty seconds. For them to pull it up and fill it out. So even just when they get there, it's, it's a pretty easy process. I've done it for some volunteering in Boston. It's pretty easy.
They're probably a lot more proficient than you or I.
Yeah.
Keeps the cookies, fills in their names.
Well, my, my concern was the ones that show up that I don't, you know. I usually, because I hand out volunteer badges for them. And when I do that, I ask them their name and I check their name off my list.
So maybe just make sure that QR code is on your list.
What about putting QR code on the badge itself?
So that at that point, you give them the QR code and now it's their responsibility to make sure they're signed up.
Oh, yeah. So if you put the QR code on the back of the badge, just tell them, hey, like before you put this on, can you, with your phone? Send in.
I can try that.
Yeah, I mean, I think the QR code with the kids, it's like when you're looking for a menu. You go to the restaurants that don't have the menu. I mean, as soon as you pick your phone up with the.
Right.
I think it will be that easy for the kids and like Kim says.
I, I would say that the, the kids probably would be okay with that. I think some of the people, like, I mean, most of our committee right now, I mean, I'm the youngest one and I'm, well, no, that's not true. We just got two young ladies that joined the committee. But I mean, the core group that started was, I mean, I'm the youngest one. I'm sixty-four. You know, so I mean, it's, it's tough if we don't get volunteers.
Oh, I get it.
So I'd hate to like turn someone away that just because they don't want to do the QR code.
I think use your best judgment. We don't want to turn volunteers away if we can void it.
Yeah, I mean, we can, I mean, that's, that was my concern is that people will walk away if I say they have to do this. I mean, I would still get, like I said, I still. Someone that's older is maybe confused.
Kids that want credit? If they're high school kids that want credit though? And you say this will make sure you get credit? They're going to, they're going to want to make sure they do it.
That would actually be really helpful because we, we've been having a little bit of an issue with some of the students that. Don't stay the whole time. So, and we don't have to sign anything for them that says that they, you know, that they worked the whole time.
Yep.
So maybe that would be helpful. I mean, I don't know if, if it's really part of the policy if I can say that. Cause they go home and tell mommy and daddy, well, she made me do this, you know? And then they'll be, you know, calling you guys saying, all right, what's going on?
Well, we can make sure that it helps them get credit.
Yeah.
If they're doing our program, yeah.
So if, if I can butt in for a second, just to take that one step further in dealing with the leagues, I know when I was involved with softball, we'd have the, the. Softball kids come down and help run clinics and stuff like that. So who would manage that? Is that the leagues or is that the recommend?
That'd be the league, right? They're part of the league, right?
Okay, so they're responsible for that? Good.
Okay, so, um, let me see if there's anything else here. Oh, yeah, it, it was about the insurance. I know I, Jason said something about it, but I just wanted to make sure. That Spirit of Litchfield volunteers are all covered if we're at one of our events, for the town event. That's been approved by the rec committee. That we're all covered still under the rec committee's insurance.
Yeah, so the reason I, I kind of said somewhat, so there's different rules, right? So you never have workman's compensation. You're never qualified for that, even as a, as a commission member. You're just not. You have to be an employee. But you are covered, just like anyone that is, is working on any town property at any time. Even if you are, you know, attending at some point, if it's a sanctioned event approved, then there's coverage. So that's not an issue, but that is the reason why we're gathering the information. Because we have a reporting requirement. So we have to report within forty-eight hours.
Okay.
Why do you need to sign a waiver?
So the waiver. Which I think was the short-term volunteer. Was basically saying that it, you're always going to be covered by the, whether you're attending, whether you're working, whether. But you're only covered as to the liability on the town.
Yeah, but it says right here, this last sentence, this will require personal information, emergency contact. And have the volunteer be responsible for their own safety. To me, that says town's not going to cover them.
Which one do you want? The short-term?
Third paragraph down on the second page.
Yeah, it's gonna, the, the own safety is being changed to be, and sign a waiver is what it's going to be changed to.
Okay.
Based on Jason's feedback.
Okay.
You know, there was something about when we were in conservation, Jason, that there was, if people wanted to pick up and use a chainsaw. That we had a waiver signed. That one of the committee members, that we had a waiver signed. Is that correct? No?
Nope. We don't have any waivers for use of equipment. We, we don't let anybody use any of the power equipment.
But you use, but you use it. So, so that's a member?
As, as a member, we don't let volunteers touch, touch any of it.
But as a member, you're a volunteer.
So they're a vol- yeah.
Short-term volunteers.
Oh, we don't really have those, right?
We do for like when we do cleanups and stuff like that.
Cleanups, maybe fishing derby, something like that, but.
I had the same concern Jason did about the employer approving. Whether you're a volunteer. And the other, the other thing I just noticed was, and I don't remember exactly where it was, but it was. Saying that volunteers have to follow the same rules and policies that paid staff follow. There's nothing in here that tells anybody what those rules are. I mean, there should be a link or an addendum or something. I'm trying to remember. I apologize. I didn't mark.
It's on the, the rights and responsibilities, on the last paragraph on the first page. It says they must adhere to the same rules and policies as the organizations paid staff, including maintaining confidentiality where appropriate. Volunteers are expected to be punctual, dependable and fulfilling their commitments. I think that more pertains to the long-term volunteers, correct? The town volunteers? Not the subcommittees or?
Yes, because maintaining confidentiality where important is non-public session. So that is, that is a town volunteer.
I would definitely clarify the first word in that paragraph, volunteers. What type of volunteers? And then the, with their town volunteers or whatever, they're, I mean, like I'm not going to sign anything unless I read it first. So it may be in the policy, a link to where those. Rules and policies are or? I don't know.
So there is a link, there is an actual drive that town volunteers, commission members all have access to. That gives all the rules, regulations, orientation, materials, things like that. But you're right, Jen, so that's a town volunteer.
Yeah.
Yeah, a commission member.
But I would still, in the policy itself, define like where they can find that information. And I think that's all I had. Yep.
Yeah, I think that's all I have as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for this topic? No? Okay. So we'll, we'll, we'll keep, we'll. We'd kind of like to close this and we'll keep public input after we close it. So, short, short interruption to public input. We'll get through this one. So what is the board's desire at this point? It sounds like she need, Catherine needs to go and just change some more wordings.
I want a clean copy, yeah.
I would say wants a clean copy. Yeah, yep. And wants a clean, she's actually, looks like she's captured live, watching her do it live. So she's definitely following along pretty well on the phone. Once she has her final draft, I would make sure we get it out to all the chairs, all the boards again. You can point them to the live doc, but just make sure they all get a message saying, here's where. You can point to the live doc, but just make sure they all get a message saying, here's where the existing policy is, waiting for, you know, another set of feedback. Okay?
George Lavash wrote in, but I think a lot of this was covered.
A lot, a lot, I think Jason covered a lot with George wrote too.
Especially the impromptu breakout of a volunteer, right, on the beach, right? So, yeah.
Exactly.
So I'm glad that that handed, we we talked about that.
I think, I know when it comes to people stepping up or doing other activities, we just need to use our best best judgment on bringing them in and make sure we at least understand who they are and if there's emergency contact, grab it, I guess, if something does happen, but. Okay. All right, so the next step on this is Catherine's gonna re-edit it and we'll have another look at it again when,
Send it out.
Send it out to the commissions for, commissions and boards first, and then, once they get their their opportunity to have feedback, we'll have another session on it.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Catherine, thank you very much for uh, doing this and we look forward to the next set of changes.
Awesome. Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Bye-bye. All right, so we're gonna stay in on public. Anybody, I mean, sorry, public, sorry. So uh, anybody else who wanna step forward for public input?
You were here first. Please bring back the good old days.
What's the good old days?
None of the stuff you just had to go through for half an hour. Rick Charbonneau, four-one Charles Bancroft Highway. So I'm coming is, um, as you know, and if anybody looked at Facebook, you can tell that Mel's has been pretty loud again this year and the last year and the year before that and the year before that. So back a couple years ago, um, I bought the town a a decibel meter. I I think it's five or six thousand dollars, whatever it was, you bought it.
I bought it for you, yeah.
So earlier, I called the building inspector and I asked him if he was the code enforcement officer. And he told me he was. And I asked him, um, you know, I told him that they were, they were loud and, I mean, I live quite a ways away and they woke me up at ten-thirty, eleven o'clock at night. I think it's, it's loud. So I also been told that the police department said there's no noise ordinance in town. So, when you look at the regulations, the planning board regulations, it says you can't exceed seventy-five decibels at your property line. At your property line, okay? Wherever that is, it's not down the road, a thousand feet away, it's anywhere that you could exceed that. So, when I talked to him, um, he said he would check it out and he would find out if there was, there was no noise ordinance or whatever. Um, I asked him if he would call me back and he said he would, but he never did. Then I saw him, uh, I think it was last, maybe it was two weeks ago, the last planning board meeting he was in for something he had to do. And I asked the building inspector, well, he told me, when I talked to him the fir-, the only time that I talked to him on telephone, he told me he would go out that next weekend and check it. I said, okay, will you call me back? And that's when he said he did. So he didn't call me back, but I saw him here at the planning board meeting on Tuesday, whatever meeting that was with the planning board. And I asked him if he went out and he said he didn't have time, but he was going out that weekend. I said, okay, will you call me back after and let me know if there is a violation or not? I know there's a violation. I've been out there with a meter, I know what it is, but I can tell you till I'm blue in the face that they're exceeding it, it doesn't matter. Somebody from the town has to do that. It's not me. I could hire somebody, I could hire an expert, doesn't matter. Somebody from the town has to be there to witness it. So then, he didn't, I called him that following Tuesday and asked, he didn't, he wouldn't, he didn't answer the phone. I left him a message. I asked him to call me back to tell me, know what his results was. He's still, has never called me back. And then I heard from somebody else that asked him about it. And then he s-, he told them that he was going that Thursday night, which was a rainy night that same weekend as Halloween. I don't know if he went. I've never got a phone call from him. I've never done anything. So the year's over. Right, I get it. But I don't think we should have to keep going over this year after year. They they clearly, Kim was on the planning board when they agreed to seventy-five decibels at their property line.
It's a contract.
You know?
They had to adhere to it, yeah.
They agreed to it. I mean, I'm not, it's in the regulation. So, when everybody just ignores the regulations and we have nobody to call at ten o'clock at night or eleven o'clock at night, what do we do? What does a citizen do? If, if somebody called my office and said that we're making noise, or somebody was complaining about me, I'd wanna know about it. Cause I'd fix it, whatever that was, you know, so. So either somebody's telling the building inspector not to call me back, or he just doesn't wanna call me back to tell me what the answer is. I have no idea what it is. I wasn't rude to him. You can go listen to the message I left on his phone. And see, I'll talk to him just like I'm talking to you right now.
No, and you do, you, you deserve a phone call back, good or bad, right?
Good or bad, I, you know, say, we don't have a regulation, we, we, we don't have a noise ordinance. Cause if we don't, then we need to find out what we gotta do when it's. Site plan to, to abide by a regulation, you know, and then, and then I, then I hear other things about some things that I wanna do and, you know, people are afraid they wanna, don't wanna set a precedent. Well, I don't get, I don't get the precedent thing, but whatever, so.
So, when you per-, when we purchase, when you purchased the um, decibel meter on our behalf, uh, we did go out and do some tests, right? Let's say, they never once exceeded any of the tests we did beyond seventy-five. That's not to say they don't spike some point in time during night and it pops down again. I think the biggest challenge we have is in enforcement, is that we don't have a consistent monitoring to know when they actually do it, right? By the time the officers get down there, it's quiet, right? And I think that's where the police's concern is. They, they, they have to hear it to say it was bad and they have to have the equipment to go do it. But I know they've been, I know they've been experimenting with the built-in ones of the phone and they've been going down and measuring and it's never been really that high, I heard. But I'm not, I can hear them from my house and I don't live anywhere near there, so I know it's loud. When the, when the clouds are low, it gets even louder, so. But I don't know how we enforce it. I know we, as a board, we struggled with a sound ordinance, put one in place, and it was, how do you manage it? How do you enforce it? How do you determine that it actually occurred? Because everything is done, we're enforcing after the fact, right? And, I don't know.
But when it's happening every night, if it's just one night, you know, it's like the Fourth of July, okay, it's Fourth of July, we gotta accept it, everyone's gonna blow off fireworks, okay, it's done. But this is for eighteen nights or twenty nights, whatever they're, they're out there, and some nights are worse than others, I mean.
They had a cannon going off hourly, right?
I thought they, they still got rid of that?
I thought they stopped doing the cannon.
Did they stop the cannon? Cause that would be how we could tell.
That they have new rock and roll music now?
I don't know if it's a band. There's music going on down there.
There's new music going on, though. They changed it.
So the, if I remember correctly, the uh, the meter does keep a record. And I'm, I'm assuming, I'm assuming the building inspector went down there and we just, we know what it was at that time.
Yes, I followed up with him and I asked him if he went down, and I also asked him if he returned your call. Yep.
And did he return the call and did he say?
I was told yes.
He did not. I had my cell phone number, they can leave me a message. I did not get a return.
What was the decibel when you went?
We can go get the meter and check, but.
Yeah, he told me that it was, well, it never reached near seventy-five at the property line. Um, I know that, um, I've spoken with the police chief multiple times during the ti- during the season because we were receiving other complaints.
Right.
And that he was checking it periodically, granted it by the app on the phone.
Yeah.
And he said the same thing, that it did not reach seventy-five at the property line. So.
And I can tell you it does, with a meter. So it's, it's just that, it's when it's happening, I mean, it's, it's not, it's, I don't know. I don't know what we do. But it goes on year after year after year. People are complaining. I mean, you can go on Facebook and you can hear it. And a car going by, a car going by will bring it up to eighty decibels. If you're standing outside of the road, car goes by, it'll go up to eighty decibels.
Yep.
So when a band's playing or they're, they're, they're making all that noise, trust me, it's gonna be higher than seventy-five decibels at the property line. If you go hide behind a tree, no, maybe not. But if, if you, if you're gonna, it's there. I mean.
It's thumping the house with the bass.
Yep, so anyway.
At your house, it's thumping the house with the bass?
Uh, no, I'm down there. If it's loud music, yeah. But, like I said, I think the challenge is that when someone goes out at some point in time, so there's no, we can't say that we monitor you the whole day and you, you basically exceeded five times. We have no record of that, right?
Okay, so next year, I'll hire a professional to stay out there every night for the whole eighteen nights, okay?
Yeah.
Now, at the end, when they break the, when it comes in and they exceeded the seventy-five decibels, what will the board do?
Yeah, I agree. I don't know what we're gonna, we'll be able to do.
Okay, but I'm gonna give you something that, not the town did, but I did. I, I paid, I'll pay the guy to do it. I'm telling you, it's breaking the.
No, and and Rick, I, I, I agree with you. I mean, I do. I'm just saying that I think it's difficult to, for the police department to enforce it or the building to, because they're not there when it's occurring. And maybe we do have to say, you know what, you're gonna need to be there a night or two and pay you to do it and sit there. If you go into the park, I'll tell you, it's definitely loud. If you go into the park, it is off the rock.
I don't want you to go in the park. I want you to go on the property line.
Yeah. I had suggested we put a sensor at the edge of the parking lot. But that's, then there's the infrastructure to do that, right? To measure them, to keep them honest with the town.
Yeah.
So we had self-monitoring, but that's a little bit bigger infrastructure headache.
Why couldn't it happen?
It was the cost. It was, where do you put it? What poll do you get? You gotta get rights to the poll. To me, that has to come back. I, to me, the planning board needs to either instruct them to do it so they can prove they're not over the code. Maybe that's what they have to do, right? Having them put a consistent sound monitor at the edge of their property, facing inward and so.
And and we've been there with the planning board and the planning board will say it's the code enforcement's job at that point. When you're done at the planning board, now it's code enforcement. So what came first, the chicken or the egg?
Yeah.
You know, and it's just what we go through, so. And I'm not against them. They need, they should be, they should be in business. They can do what they want. I just don't wanna be woke, woke up at ten-thirty, eleven, twelve o'clock at night because of loud noise. And with my windows closed and I don't have my windows open, I don't even drive by there anymore when they're open, so.
Understood.
So, next year, I'm just putting it out there, next year, we have to figure out a solution. And like I said, I'll hire someone, I'll pay for them, as long as you'll enforce it, when that professional that I hire comes in and and shows that.
Yeah, I don't think we want you to have to incur that expense. You already gave us the meter. We just gotta figure out when you use it right correctly. So we'll have to work on that.
All right, so we knew, we know the year's over, but we need to.
Yeah. How's the sound level for Holly Jolly, though? That starts, Holly Jolly starts really soon.
Christmas?
That's not.
It's, it's kind of a very, it's a very soothing music is what it is.
Yeah, they're not playing a bass drum pounding and all that that goes with it.
So that's what I remember reading, is that the people who are like, they're waking up my babies every night.
Exactly.
They were saying that the music had changed from spooky Halloween music to very loud, like metal rock.
Right.
So it had changed this year, um, because they were like, even, they didn't seem to mind the, the spooky music as much because it was festive. Um, so maybe that's a question that could be asked, is if they could maybe go back to.
We gotta, just something, I'm not, I'm not the only one complaining.
No, you're not.
You're coming, you're, you're the voice. I, I, and I think everybody appreciates that.
You know, it's, it's there and it needs to be addressed, that's all.
We've had several complaints on this. Is there, can the town write a letter to them and just say that there's been a lot of complaints about the noise levels and ask them to monitor it? And that we will be monitoring it in the future?
Absolutely.
Okay, if the board's willing, I think that's probably a good.
Yeah, we should instruct, we should instruct.
Specifically the change in the type of music that does have that heavy metal factor to it, has changed.
It's all the noise, though, you know, it's not just that.
And I, and I tried. I called Wayne and asked him and, you know, he told me he checked in front of my house and I don't care about in front of my house, you know, oh, I mean, I can hear it, but quiet it down and, and it didn't, and I called him back and said, you know, it's, it's not any better. And he said, well, it doesn't, we're not breaking the law.
So.
Breaking the regulations.
Well, I sat outside of Ramon's and I, they have music there and I can, I can hear it.
Yeah.
It's loud.
I, I think, like you suggest, just, the board's asking the building inspector, code enforcer, to send a letter raising the issue. This has been both on social media and people have come forward saying it's really definitely, definitely changed.
It was, it has changed is what the, the feeling is.
And I'd also like the board be copied on that letter.
Okay.
So it go in a folder. And then, put them on notice that next year, we've gotta find a resolution. They have a choice to come in and talk with the planning board or, it's how they can self-monitor and be able to prove that they're not and, or they are and I think we should put it on the burden of the business to deal with it, cause they're the ones causing the issue, so.
And don't wait till the end of the year.
Well, I'll be in in the fall. We're not, we just gotta do it. I mean, they gotta do it. The, the planning board calls them in or whatever. I mean, someone's, someone's gotta enforce.
Yeah, so the code enforcer needs to send a letter. We're asking the code enforcer, code enforcer. We've all seen the complaints on face, on social media. I know Rick is not the only one. I've seen him on social media. And I've had a few folks that I know in that area have said something to me too about it. They all, anybody wants the business to survive.
I want them to survive.
They like the business. They all, anybody wants the business to be. They're not saying shut down and all that stuff. I think that's the.
I want a restaurant there that does wells. I, I want it to do well.
I don't want them to stop. I just, yeah, just.
Turns on a little bit, yeah.
Notches, that's all. I don't care. I mean, it's all under control. The traffic's not bad anymore. None of that stuff's bad, but.
Yeah, they seem like they solved a lot of their parking issues and stuff like that, so.
Get the noise down a little bit, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you very much for coming in. Anybody else like to come forward? Mr. Parker?
Third time today. Yeah. Busy day. Busy day, yeah. Mike Parker, twelve Nesbitt Court. Couple things. First of all, shout out to the students, the staff and administrators today at Griffin Memorial and Litchfield Middle School for honoring our veterans with an excellent program presented by, by excited and motivated students. It was really great. And additionally, Griffin Memorial Wall of Heroes is a wonderful way to put faces to names of the veterans in our town. So a heartfelt thanks to everybody that made it happen. It really makes me proud that the Litchfield is my hometown. Thank you. Now, I may have been a bit overeager, but I was a bit disappointed that on the meeting of the twenty-seventh, y'all didn't allow comments at all. I sat home and talked to the screen. And actually, when I was on YouTube, it let me make comments. But then they didn't go anywhere, I guess. Uh, so I guess this is a kind of a public service announcement. I'm, I'm still hoping to find ways or for y'all to find ways to engage with voters other than just coming down here physically, okay, uh, to let them know what's happening and for you to hear them and hear their concerns and, and hear what's, what their ideas are. As a follow-up, um, and I'll just toss this out as a question, not expecting an answer necessarily, but is there many thoughts or discussions on the idea of charging usage fees for the transfer station? For athletic facilities or for the library? It came up in this venue, it came up at the budget meeting, and I just wonder if that's got any traction or if that's just, just loose, uh, just loose talk.
I brought up the one about the dump sticker. It was shot down pretty badly, but I didn't take it further to, if budget brought it up or not.
I mean, I hope it's not taking any, any track, making any traction, but I, I just wanna kinda make sure, cause it, sometimes things like that float around and all of a sudden, boom, it pops up again.
I think the feeling is that we pay our taxes to use the services and we don't really need to pay extra.
Now, part of the, part of the use, part of the usage fees for athletic facilities was not people that were residents of Litchfield. It were teams coming from outside.
Those are adopted.
They do, they do pay.
Pay usage fees, okay.
Small amount, yeah.
All right. Um, I've done a lot of rummaging around, looking at the, the town site and whatever else and, and and you know, I, I look at the twenty-five, twenty-six strategic plan. And that's a really good document. It's well thought out, it's aspirational. My question is, when's the last time we did a check on it? Are we on track or are we off track? And oh, by the way, I've not heard it mentioned, nor the missions, goals, objectives, uh, during the budget talks. I mean, I would think that in budgeting for an organization, that you wanna reach back, this is our mission, this is our goals, these are our objectives, and this is how our budget is going to help us do that. Or we're gonna short, we're gonna fall short of those things if we don't get the resources we need to accomplish those things. So, uh, if it hasn't been, it was put together in March, if it hasn't been looked at, my recommendation is that y'all do checkup. There's also something that I've not found. There's also something that I've not found, uh, called an operational plan. Is that? The strategic plan talks about an operational plan being in for, in, uh, being produced as well. Is that something that just hasn't come yet?
I think the strategic plan that's talking about the operational plan is, um, more the transfer station and the highway. They have operational plans enforced, yes. But there are no others.
And the fire, fire and police have response plans, response plans. Those are the plans we were talking about.
Okay, so that's what, I, I wasn't quite sure what it was talking about, so.
Yeah, when the strategic plan was developed, it was developed based on all the department heads doing, sort of doing their quadrant study, what's in, what's gone, and then the results were based on that, so.
Uh, it's really good. I'm just wondering, when's the temperature check? You know, we're halfway, we're more than halfway through the year. It'd be like, are we on track, off track? If we're off track, what do we need?
Good point. I can tell you, we're off track because of the default. Because a lot of the things were risks in our, on our equipment and our fleet and those kind of things. So we have to kind of work through that, but.
So wouldn't that be a great way to talk to people about, hey, we had the strategic plan. Here's where our goals, here's where our opportunities were, here's where our shortfalls were, et cetera. And this is what our budget is doing to us, and we're not even, we're not even able to make ends meet in the strategic plan. And we're going to, you know, we're, we're not going to do as well as we wanted to do and put it in terms that people understand. Other than just dollars and cents.
Next leadership meeting, we're gonna address that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we need to, we can use strategic plan to help educate what we are looking for, trying to do.
It ought to be some, it ought to be something more than just sits on the shelf.
Conservation, did you see the conservation meeting on Thursday? They brought up their goals, um, for the year, and they went through each one, met, didn't meet. Um, and it was a pretty, it was pretty, you should watch the, the meeting. It's a great meeting anyway, but, um, but yeah, they went through each of their goals.
And that's.
They had overreached and, and still met most of the goals.
And what a great way to use, I mean, that's what the plan is designed for, and what a great way to do that.
Yeah.
So.
So we could maybe do something like that, Kim. Kim, we could maybe do something like that. Conservation, the way conservation did it and said, these were our goals. This is the ones we hit. These are the ones we didn't hit. And, um, it was, it was pretty good. It was good to see.
Yeah, I watched the meeting. I think, so this was the first year that we had a real strategic plan and hats off to all the department heads because they worked really hard on that. So I definitely think you're right. It's time for a temperature check. And we should let, uh, the board know how the, and the residents know how default impacted those goals. Um, so I'm really glad you brought it up.
I mean, if I was here or at the budget committee asking for immediate, asking for money, I'd reference that strategic plan right off the bat. And say, here's, you know, here's what we've been tasked to do. Here's our, here's our mission. Here's our goals, et cetera, so.
I guess I would ask if the budget committee is aware that the strategic plan exists.
We can't afford it.
Well, I, I, I think, I think they're aware of it because it's been talked about in meetings in the past. Um, do they think that that's gonna drive them to change their decision on our budget? Probably not. The, the budget committees are looking at dollars and cents. They're looking at what they feel is affordable by the community, irrelevant to what, what the town, I shouldn't say irrelevant, but they're trying to keep within, you know, a tax limit that they feel they can keep the services running the same way. But these decisions are actually impacting our services or gonna impact our services. So it's kind of difficult, but, I mean, I'll still remind them of it again, and it's not a problem.
Last thing. Uh, in September, y'all put together a set of briefing slides, uh, really nice. It talked about the proposed twenty-twenty-six budget. Laid it out in layman's terms and it wasn't spreadsheets and all that kind of stuff. A very straightforward. It was really, really well done. That was September. Has it been updated since then? Because I think it's a great thing for citizens to see to understand what the budget is. And we've gone through, you know, I, I've seen us go through about, about four different iterations of the budget now, okay? And maybe this thing, other, I mean, spreadsheets are great. I mean, I'm an Excel geek, but, um, this briefing was really well done. And I think we owe it to, I, I think somebody owes it, uh, to the citizens to put together, to update that product to let them see it and then let them know it's there.
Well, let, put it back on the town meeting page and just go to each one of the slides. Where there was reductions or changes, just put it in red, reduced by budget committee.
It's like, hmm, in my spare time?
No, thank you, Mr. Parker. You're right.
But it was, I mean, it really is a great product, but it's, it's sorely out of date right now.
Yeah, we typically update it again when we go to deliberative at that point. That's when it has all the numbers and stuff.
But you know, people, people are still making up their minds. People are still thinking. And this is a time, you know, if you wait too long, they're casting, they're, they're casting stone, they're casting concrete. So right now, while, while people's opinions are still malleable or whatever, this is a good time to use this as a public information product to get information out about what's happening in a way that's not, uh, that doesn't, uh, you know, doesn't scare people away like spreadsheets sometimes do. They're looking at spreadsheets and their eyeballs just cross. But this was a really engaging product. It's really good.
People were very engaging today.
Any else?
No, that's all I have. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Appreciate it.
We'll check back in, ideas.
Anybody else have any, uh, in, public input? What's that? You, you are on the agenda. You're actually, we'll push you up, but you're next, actually. Yeah, so if, if there's no more public input, I'll close public input at seven forty-six. So next up will be the proposal for a re, um, proposal for resource fair in January. Mr. Jacques, how are you? How are you?
Good evening. Um, I'm Bobby Jacques from eighteen Lockmill Drive.
Mike Parker, twelve Nessbrough Court.
Rusty Pietro, fifteen Rooker Way.
John Madoff of Fifty Century.
Bill Dugan, forty-one Nessunke.
Welcome, everybody.
You know, um, I just wanna start with saying, um, you know, it's, I, I think it's a, it's a great privilege and honor for you guys to support us veterans group, uh, over the years since two thousand nineteen. So just to go on record to say that, you know, and it's kind of funny. Here it is, the tenth of, tenth of November, tomorrow's Veterans Day. We didn't plan this to come here for that day because it just all happened. I talked to Ms. Kleiner and she suggested that we come over here, so I think she's gonna add more things to it. Uh, I came here because we're kind of worried about the veterans across, uh, across the United States and particularly here, uh, New Hampshire. In Massachusetts, they have a veteran service officer in every town. So every town has a veteran service officer. So when someone gets out of the military or someone is in need, uh, they go to their town and they, they get paid by the town and they get paid, and they're funded through the state. Uh, we don't have that in New Hampshire. We have four VSOs that are scattered in different places and sometimes they meet, sometimes they don't meet. So I went to several different, um, uh, resource fairs. We talked about that, whether you call it expo, whatever. They have it in Boston as well. And they bring in, uh, uh, numerous, uh, uh, events like, you know, what a veteran service officer is for. When a veteran decides they wanna go ahead and have benefits or they wanna get healthcare, they wanna be buried, where do they go? Most of the time, they don't know. They come here and they come and they see Donna, and Donna suggested they get ahold of the folks up in Manchester, right? Uh, do they do that all the time? Probably not, right? Uh, the other thing we're, you worry about is, uh, you know, some people think that the VA healthcare is free. I talked to, I talked to Mr. Larry today. It's not.
No.
You have to have, you have to have your DD form two fourteen, which means you, you show service, right? But they also, they'll ask you to bring in your tax form. And you might say, and you look and say, what do you mean by tax form? Because they wanna see how much money you make. If you make too much money, you're not eligible for, for, for VA care. Unless you have a disability, uh, you file for one, even if it's a zero disability, then you get your PCP and all that other stuff in veterans. And but, but we have several veterans here in town. They're in their sixties, uh, that could not and need healthcare and now have applied for disability after we worked that for weeks. And in other words, we don't just have meetings and do all the stuff we do. There's other things that, that go on here that we try to help. Uh, so when I went to Ms. Kleiner, I said, you know, I'd like to do a resource fair or expo fair for veterans. So, and, and, and Mike was here. We talked about that before. How do we reach all the veterans, you know? I think we gotta reach them because if it's easy, like on a Saturday and they can come by, and, and it's a lot of things, like I was telling Billy here, there's a lot of things even for spouses, you know? Uh, they say anything about spouses' benefits because they're, they're eligible for certain things as well. But we don't, we don't have that mechanism, uh, in each town like they have in Massachusetts to do that. So we said, well, maybe we can have a resource fair or expo fair for veterans' benefits and, but not, and I said, I went to the one over here, uh, in Massachusetts and they, and they brought in, uh, they brought in people like Meals on Wheels and the Boy Scouts, and they had, uh, they had all kinds of different activities. The police and the fire and everybody to see exactly what do we do in the town, what other resources in the town? How can we go ahead and show you basically what Michael was talking about and other people talked about tonight? How do we know what we get in the town? Ms. Kleiner showed me, here's all the different things that we support in the town for the, like, the different places in, in Manchester and all these advocacy's and stuff like that. Hell, I didn't know that. I didn't see that. How much money you give to these people and what, what they do for these people. I think that's important. Social Security is another thing. You bring them in and you bring in the, uh, the other thing is the Angel Program for veterans. So I'd say, what is the Angel Program? I went to this lady. I, I spent thirty years in the Air Force. I said, what is that? She says, well, we're affiliated with like the Manchester VA, and if a veteran has problems and you qualify, they'll come, visiting nurses will actually come to your home and help them. How, how do we get that word out, right? So, Ms. Kleiner was, she said, you know what? Other places we've been, they, they have that. And she talked to other people. So she has a, a, she wants to bring them all together, which I think is a great thing. And as well, and these guys here wanna volunteer to help make that happen. We'll volunteer to help make that happen. I said, well, you know, I said to Ms. Kleiner, maybe, and I, and I talked, and I, Ms. Plansky said this, not, I'm sorry, Ms. Plansky. She said, you know, we gotta get out there and talk to these people in the town and let them know what we are, who we're all about. You said a couple of meetings ago.
Yep.
Well, this is the way you can do that. I think you can do that. You can bring all these different activities in, like the police. If they're gonna do, um, if they're looking for, uh, their, uh, warrant article, uh, and they put it on a, on an easel. I think, uh, people are visual learners. They wanna know. I mean, they walk around, they wanna say, what is this about? Tell me about this stuff. Then they have a visual thing, you know, Mr. Chairman, they can actually see it and understand the whole thing. What is, what is, what is, with the fire? What they want twenty-four hours? Why do we want that? You know, they don't never see that. They see, uh, maybe deliberation when people are pissed off. I hate to say that. And they're, they're fighting over warrant articles or whatever. And then they, and they come in at, at the time to go vote and they go, no, right? Well, maybe they don't have to say no. Maybe they can say, well, these are things that I know. What about the food bank program? Am I eligible for that? Where is that? You know, some people don't know that. And they, they were there and the whole thing. Uh, Meals on Wheels, she said, maybe the, someone, a representative could come in, but she's got other thoughts and I'll let her do that in a minute. Uh, but I think it's really, would be a good mechanism to get the word out, especially now with the, with the taxes out there and everything. You know, they wanna, they wanna raise cane with the selectmen, you know, you don't make that. I mean, it's, it's low here. It's not, that's, it's eighty-three percent is on the other side of the house. But you wanna say, you know, what is, I wanna buy a truck, like when Kevin wants to buy a truck, it's not a lot of money to fix it, thirty-six thousand, and how it affects the town. They need to see that. I mean, the town budget is really nothing as, as compared to the other side. I think you don't get a good wash when that happens, and that's what we wanna see, not only for the veterans thing, but she kind of said, let's do it, let's do a bigger one, right? I'll let you go ahead. I wanna say something about it.
So when they brought the idea to me, I mean, I have to say, I'm, I've seen this done, um, participated in. Um, I think it's really important, not only for the veterans, but also for, um, our elderly, some of our, our, that don't know these resources. And we've tried to get them out as much as we can, um, but it's difficult. If you get everyone in the same room and they can go around and talk to all these and get information all at the same time, it's ver, it's a lot easier for people. And, um, I think to talk to someone face to face is so much different than talking to someone over the phone, right? Um, and generally, these organizations will bring in, you know, pamphlets and information and things to, for other resources as well as the ones that they have. So I think we could really make it collaborative, really focus on the veterans, the elderly, and then even, you know, some of our residents that, um, may be struggling.
Yeah, I, I think it's a, I think it's a great idea.
I, I think you should bring the people to the warrant articles. They should come there too because they're gonna have to vote, right?
Yeah.
And I think people would really wanna know that. What Michael said about the strategic plan, all these different things. Russell, you got some ideas and stuff like that?
Oh, absolutely. You know, Bobby hit it on the head, you know, it, you know, obviously, we, we, we think veterans because we're veterans.
Yeah.
And it's nice. There's stuff on our website. There's stuff on the town website. But if I'm in crisis, you know, I, I know my wife. She's, she's literate with the computer and that, but she's not gonna go to the town website. She's gonna be panicking, you know? She needs to know where she can go, places she can go. Uh, there, there's a lot of programs out there that, that just folks don't know, even within the town. You know, who do I call on the weekend? You know, what if I call for an ambulance? Where's that ambulance coming from?
Right.
Is it coming from Hudson? Is it coming from here? You know, what do you mean? I called local police here and fishing game came out.
Thank you.
Why did fishing game come out to my house for noise ordinance, you know?
Right.
It's, it's, you know, the, the library. You know, there's a Libby program at the library where you don't have to go in. You can get your books online. And if you can't get out of your home, you know, maybe they can come and speak about that and talk about some of the programs that they have and, and things that they do. They give them an avenue to express their self and what's going on. Again, the food bank, it's, it's a huge thing that people are kind of embarrassed to have to go to, but don't, it doesn't need to be.
Right.
You know, we've got folks that are in our community right now, that if you just drive around and see who's done their leaves, I'm just gonna use as an example, and who hasn't? But the person that has it might have health reasons. And they don't know that we have a vehicle, that we can come out and help them do their lawns at no, at no cost. You know, it's, it's, it's just a community helping a community. You, you know, I sat here and I listened to the volunteer sheet and I was chuckling. No, no disrespect intended. I understand why you're doing it and it's very important to make sure folks are representing in the town in a safe, efficient manner. You know, I, I, I get that. But you wanna give back from the servant side of your heart when you reach, especially if you're retired and you got time on your hands. You wanna give that time back and you wanna be able to do that freely and easily. And, and this is an avenue that we can do that within our community. You know, we get together once a month and we, we, we have a plan. Bobby keeps us focused in that. But it's more than just a bunch of guys in their sixties and seventies getting together. We've got a servant side of our heart that we wanna apply to the community and try to make things better. And sometimes the roadblocks that get put in front of us are pretty challenging, that we have to leap over and we get it. You know, we've all been there. We've all ran organizations and been part of organizations. You have certain rules and ways things have to be done. But this is a way that we can come together and not just talk to veterans, but talk to folks that work in different organizations. You, you know, we've got a lot of companies out here that do, that does roofing. They do, uh, electrical. They do fencing, you know? I know, you probably don't know this, but there's a, a company up the road here that does insulation. And they told me one time when I went to them to, to help the veterans, that they do a, a once a year, uh, thing where veterans can register for a free installation of their home. You know, how does, how does that word get out to anybody?
Yeah, how do you get the word out, yeah?
Yeah, you know.
I think the resource fair is a great idea.
There's, there's another thing that, in this resource fair that I went to, they had the food bank there.
Yeah.
And it looked like they were going to Walmart. And as soon as when people would sign their little form, they go, give them a form like this. I gave this to the, Ms. Kleiner. Uh, they went ahead and made sure that they, car was there and they took care of it and they put the food in their car. And then they went in the back room and the guy who was running this fair got a hundred and ninety-one winter coats. Beautiful coats. They're about a hundred fifty bucks apiece, and he put them in the car for those, for the, for that family. And so they didn't wanna ask, but they, they were there, you know, and I, you know, like the Boy Scouts, you know, they had their drive the other day.
Yeah.
But even if the Boy Scouts, and we talked about this the other day in our meeting, and maybe, maybe, maybe the, the food program is a problem. Maybe that once a month, that maybe the veterans or the Boy Scouts or whomever, we go to maybe over there at the recycle center. When you say, go to recycle center, bring two canned goods and this is what we need and drop them off. We, and we take them for the people. You know, don't have to be just once a year, what, what, you know, so Russell's right, you know? You know, you retire, you wanna give back to the community. This is our home. We love this place. We, we're not going nowhere. We're here. That we, but we see things that, you know, we all are leaders in our own way and say, shit, when I was in the Air Force, I was in Army, I was, this would never happen. We would make this happen. We'd call the boss and he'd say, boom, that's the end of the story. We get it done.
Take care of that first. But, but we have certain churches, uh, in the area too. And I'm sure if you invited them into this, they have outreach within their own community and their own families, that they could, they would probably embrace this just as much and say, you know what? We wanna be there. You know, we wanna be there and, and, and share some of our literature and some of the things that we're doing. Because we've got a lot of, we've got people that, once you get shut in within your house, it becomes a very lonely thing. And there's a lot of folks out there. I wanna say, we have a community with people with mental health, but you don't, you, you know, you don't know what's going on behind those doors when you drive by those houses. You, you really don't. And if we can provide something that invites them into a community and invites them in to get information, to help them, doesn't mean they're gonna come. We can't make them drink the water, but we can sure make the water plentiful for them.
Yeah, and I think sometimes with these veterans, you get, you get them an opportunity that they can go to someplace from, it's like ten to two or whatever. Uh, this guy was amazing. He had ninety.
He had ninety-nine come in and they had food in the back of room. So it was no excuse, well, I gotta have lunch, but it was there. Soup, whatever you want, it was there. So these people came in and they did that. Heck, I didn't even know that there's such a thing as Vista. I thought Vista was some kind of a place that I used to live in Texas and she told me how they do, they do taxes for the elderly, you know? I mean, how many people know that? How many people understand that?
Yeah.
Because the only thing people care about is, how much am I getting, how much is my taxes? But how did it get there? And, and then what's gonna happen this year? Is it, wouldn't it be easier for the people to come and have their storyboards, I mean, visual people, we are visual people, and talk about the, the six vehicles or the three or whatever and what they need in the fire department and on and on and through the whole thing? Because I think when people understand what the town needs, that they are gonna be more apt to support it than not.
You could, you could have somebody come out and say, hey, join this fair, you can come and register to vote. You can do it right there. You know, get one of these volunteers to sign the form to, to do that on your behalf, so we don't have to pay overtime.
And, and what Michael said about, you know, the input for the citizens, I talked to Ms. Kleiner and said, maybe at the end of the, the Resource Fair, maybe if it works right, you, you have it every year at a certain time. And you have a box where even if they have it out here in the hallway and say, if you have a concern, write it out and put it in the box. Because people don't, not everybody, trust me, not everybody knows how to work a computer.
Agreed.
Today. Or, or work their phone or whatever it may be. I, I got it. But that's what we're saying. That's what we're, that's, so we, we would like to bring this to you and say, if you wanna do this as a town, then we're here to support you and make it work.
You got, you got, you got a team.
As long as we can work with Ms. Kleiner or whatever you decide to do, we will make it work. And I think it, and I think when they see five selectmen there, you know, don't go on vacation, you're all there.
Well, you're just throwing that in now, Bobby.
What do we, what do we target so I can make sure?
They're more apt to know you and they wanna see you and they wanna understand. Because, you know, you can, you know, you can get on the computer sometimes and, and I know Michael comes to a lot. And you're on the computer and say, oh, I wanna see what this is going on. And it goes, and you say, well, FBI's coming on, I gotta leave. Right? You know what I mean? So that's, that's important that you see that, like that there, so.
But not, but not only that, you're there, you're there talking to, talking to the other committees that are there saying, hey, thank you for coming. Thank you for supporting our community. You know, you're a face, you're, you're the face of the town.
It's love and kindness, right?
Yeah.
This is love and kindness in a crazy world right now.
And I think, I think the idea, the, the idea of bringing everybody into one place and have these services available, they can look and review and ask questions and give us an opportunity to mingle and, and talk to folks about what the town's challenges are and what we're trying to accomplish, could, should go a long way. I would hope so.
When, when we chatted with Ms. Kleiner, we talked about twenty-four January and, you know, whether they have it somewhere. I said initially, maybe we could have a fire, but then we talked about, maybe we could have it at a, a school cafeteria, right? Or maybe here.
I was, I was gonna suggest, because we talked about the fire station when you mentioned it. And because of the time of the year, depending on what happens outside, we don't want the trucks outside because it's cold.
Right.
Um, school may be a better venue. Come in the front, it's all flat, um, plenty of space, have people line up down the hallway. Maybe if we were doing food or something like that, we'd do it all in the cafeteria. Uh, so I think that's probably a better venue, potentially. And that also may also get a lot of the school to get involved in a sense too, for the same reasons, right? Let's educate everybody who comes about what they're trying to accomplish, yea or nay.
Definitely like to see the school and the town.
Yeah. It also gives students an opportunity to volunteer and do some of their service hours for their, you know, sophomore and senior projects. So I think it's a great idea and I think the twenty-fourth looks fine for me. So, but we have enough time, that's the question.
Do you want us to work with Ms. Kleiner or?
Uh, that would be my desire. What's the rest of the board feel? Right?
I'd love to see you guys doing the veterans part. I'll let Kim focus on other parts so that she's not.
We'll get with the school and we'll.
Yeah, if we're gonna, if we're gonna do it to twenty-fourth, we gotta start.
Oh, the cost is free.
Yeah.
No money.
Free.
All free.
It's always good. Sweat and equity is what it is.
Before January, we talked about.
Yeah, because we're gonna have to, we have to get on those organizations' calendars. They're gonna have to free up time to get people over here.
We can, we can, we can do it, we can do it, yeah.
I already reached out to.
So let's lock the calendar. Let's, let's call the school tomorrow if we can and see if we can use this facility on the twenty-fourth. Make sure there's no other programs going on, because that would be the other side, right?
Yeah.
And I do know there was a young lady at the school that reached out, um, to me as well. So I think there are students that are definitely interested.
And if, if there's room and you could bring Jason over there with his group, you know, people wanna volunteer, right? Jason's gonna, you know, Jason's gonna talk about, like, when I was in Lowell, I taught high school for twenty, almost twenty years. Says, this is what, this is what a project looked like. Here's a project my students took on at the top, and this is how it finished out at the bottom.
That's nice.
And, but I think Jason does a lot of great work and all this stuff that people do. So I think it's important that people could see that, you know? And just a, on the side thing, if I could just hit that and we'll get out of here. Fifteen November, which is gonna be Saturday. I know, I know, Mr. Chair, you said sometime, I saw you one time on Facebook, my wife responded. You thought that the town took care of the flags. Uh, they do not take care of the flags. We take care of the flags. The flags on three A, I mean, someone called and you said one time that some lady said the, the flag was.
Oh, I only meant to reach out to the highway department to coordinate with you guys. I didn't wanna give out your personal number.
No, it's okay. Mr. Weber, when I came here in two thousand nineteen, when I was getting ready to retire, and I didn't retire, but I said, we started a veterans group. And I go, how come we don't have two flag poles in the cemeteries? And that's how it started. And then we said, well, you know, Ms. Jewett started, but she didn't start it. There was another guy that started it and she took it over. And they had a certain amount of flags and they were not the flags that we put up. So we, we got, the town gave us two thousand dollars to start it, right?
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, now it costs, if you did the whole math, you did the whole thing, it costs like twenty-two thousand dollars. All those flags are hanging up there. Because a hundred and ten dollars on one pole. We replace them because of the wind on three A. Those people who live on three A, that thing is brutal. So, uh, anyways, we take the flags down on the fifth, uh, this week. And on the fifteenth, my wife and her gang over at the fire station will be taking them apart, putting them together. So if you wanna see how it all works, that you'll, you, you can come by, they'll be there. Um, and that's a great thing. On the fourth of December, the third of December, we're going up north to pick up the wreaths. On the fourth of December, the kids from the middle school will close the school. They do a great job. They, they bring out all the people and the, the band comes, everybody. And, um, Ms. Grantham brings all those kids in, they're solemn, quiet. And they put the wreath, three kids put a wreath on each veteran's grave and they yell their name and they, and they get back in line. And then in the afternoon, uh, over at Hillcrest, I'd ask you guys or anybody you wanna put out to the town, uh, any, any citizens or whatever would wanna go ahead and, there's like sixty-five of them over there, because we put the hangers on the other day. Uh, if they wanna go ahead and be there at, 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 that was ten o'clock, I mean, two o'clock in the afternoon, uh, they will be there, we'll open up the back of the trailer and they can come and put it on your loved ones' graves and stuff like that if they wanna do that. Or anybody that wants to do that for, for, for that matter, so.
I, I, I encourage you, if you haven't been there for the fourth of December, when the middle school does it, I am telling you, it is one of the most moving things. It gives you goosebumps to watch these young kids come from the middle school, line up in the middle of the cemetery, play patriotic music and, 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 and present those wreaths to the, to the gravesite. It is so, so moving.
Yeah, they do a great job.
They do a fantastic job.
What's the date of Hillcrest?
Fourth of December.
Twelve, yeah.
Fourth of December.
Oh, December four.
Hopefully won't, won't sell. I mean, some of the kids, parents will kill them, but they go out there in their pajamas, you know?
With the sweats, the sweats.
Yeah.
Or they don't wear coats.
Clarification goes on at home.
They don't, apparently don't get cold is what they do.
Okay, the last thing, this is just information for you, because I know you, I know you have to struggle with this whole thing. Um, there's thirty-six veterans in the town. Thirty-six veterans are one hundred percent totally and permanently dis- um, disabled. That means that they're never gonna, this stuff is never gonna get better. Uh, the governor went ahead recently, she went ahead and did a HB ninety-nine. She changed the law. The law used to say that you could go up from, from zero. Uh, this town gives seven oh five for someone that's totally and permanently disabled, one hundred percent. Uh, seven oh five, okay? And they get their seven fifty as well. So they get fourteen fifty-five, it's fourteen fifty or so. And, um, she went ahead and passed this thing here with the Senate and said, I, I, I give each town, there's twenty other states in the country that gives a veteran an opportunity through their town to go from zero to the total tax bill, total tip relief. And I went and, and met with many of them and, and talked with them and said, you know, I'm gonna ask the town if they wanna, wanna go ahead and see if they can go ahead and increase what you get now, fourteen fifty-five to four thousand dollars, which is twenty-five hundred and fifty dollars, which means that, um, that would be four thousand dollars off their taxes. Talking with Ms. Kleiner, we, we, we're down a hundred thousand dollars because we lost a lot of veterans and we lost, a lot of people have moved away. So we're under the cap. It's ninety-two thousand dollars for those thirty-six veterans. So I don't know if you, see, I don't know if you have to do a warrant article for that, because it's already in there. We didn't, we didn't request that warrant article. The governor said, they can't get both no more. They can't get the seven fifty and the seven oh five. They only can get what you're gonna give them. But just to tell you, we lose three hundred and thirty Vietnam veterans boots on the ground a week. We have six hundred thousand alive out of two million, seven hundred thousand that were boots on the ground in Vietnam, like John and I and Billy, right? And it don't get, it, it, we, those guys ain't gonna get better. That's what I'm trying to tell you. They, so when, when I, I heard you said, well, do they, do they qualify for the senior exemption? And those guys don't, most likely they do not, right? But they do, they do know that they can't go to work, uh, in, you know, when you're eighty years old and you've got neuropathy and all these cancer and all that stuff. You know, we didn't go to war because we wanted to go get sick. We went to war to support this country. And all, all we're saying is, we believe that we should be given that opportunity to say, we will still wanna take care of that. Because we, when we went to war, they said, when you come back, we're gonna take care of you regardless. That doesn't always happen, right? Because we're looking at the VA healthcare and these guys are, if we don't get these guys to go ahead and, and get involved with VA healthcare, they're gonna take it away. And then what do they have, right? So if you, if, so you got a tough decision to make, I know you gotta do all the stuff, but it doesn't affect the budget. Like Ms. Kleiner said, it doesn't affect the budget. If this is above the budget and it's, the line item's there.
Yep.
And I guess the governor, I don't know why she did what she did, but she did. And, uh, I mean, I'm glad she did, but I mean, it's the same thing, you know? And somebody said, oh, we're gonna go to Florida and we'll get it all. Well, go to Florida, because I'm not leaving New Hampshire, we're not gonna go, so. So I just wanted to be, that's more of awareness for you all to, to look at that and everything.
Yeah, we reviewed that warrant article, at least what the impacts were, that's what she said. We just haven't made a decision which way we're gonna go yet.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, Billy, Johnny, you have anything?
Yes, Johnny.
And, and John and I were fortunate, what, two weeks ago?
One.
Whenever it was, we went to, we went to, on a flight, on a flight to New England. We, uh, we went to DC for the day and I was not supposed to go. I went there to go ahead and support him. And my wife went ahead and did this on the side and everybody else wrote me letters. And next thing I know, I was at the thing and I was on the airplane with my grandson, so.
And they have veterans in town that do not know this.
They don't know that. Yeah, there's a lot, so there's a lot of things we can get, get going. So we just wanna let you know that we're here for you. So use us as, like Russell said, right? Michael, Michael, he's a Colonel, he's in the Army, he, he's, he's a resource. I'm telling you, you, you know, uh, all these guys, you know, we've done other things in our life, but it's fun to give back to this town. Don't you think?
Hey, look, look at the park.
Park's beautiful, man.
We can make things happen if you let us.
Yep.
You know, just, just use your resources.
Now, Michael, you poked your head into the Heritage Committee and you were at the two hundred and fifty meeting. I hope you come back.
I hated to leave that. I, but I couldn't stay there. It wasn't fair to the kids. And I couldn't show up some days and the faculty, but, oh yeah. Great kids at LMS.
They're good kids.
All good kids.
I saw them at Magister.
I just wanna say thank you for everything you've done for the town and, and for your service.
It's been a service.
And your continued efforts to steer us in the right direction. And, uh, we look forward to the Resource Fair. I think this is gonna be a great.
Maybe we'll see you on the fourth of December, huh? If you can, get out of work, if you can get out there and see the kids. I know, I know you were, Kim, you were there last year, I believe.
My son was playing the trumpet, hopefully.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He practices.
Okay, next on our agenda is impact fee requests from the school.
Yes. Um, so Karen and I actually had a conversation with Julie Darling, the business administrator, um, for the school, uh, because there were two amounts of elementary impact fees that were expiring. Um, one set that was expiring, um, later this month and then another, uh, set in April. Um, we suggested that, uh, they contact the school board and see if they want to encumber those for the work that's being done with harem in for, uh, pre-construction services. Um, so the school district did send this letter. They did vote, um, and asked to encumber them. We have verified the amount, so we are asking that the selectmen, uh, encumber eleven thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars and ten cents in elementary impact fees, uh, for the purpose of pre-construction associated costs from harem in.
So eleven, one fifty-one, ten.
That way they, they'll be encumbered and.
When's the work expire?
So the work, they are currently, this contract for the pre-construction is what harem is doing right now, uh, working with the community to fill up, figure out what needs to be done. And the focus groups are holding and, and all that. It's the.
It's the one they, it's the one they decided on. Yeah, it's the one they decided on.
Yeah, by the sense is defer the contract costs they already have. So they're gonna just deduct it from what they already outlaid for it. They're paying, they're paying an invoice now, they're just gonna use this to.
Yeah, they haven't gotten an invoice yet for this pre-construction. Um, but we know that the, there is a contract that has been approved by the school board.
Okay.
And these are impact fees that if, if they are not able to be used at the school, will be returned to the contractor who paid them.
Yeah.
So they are expiring and going away.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the use of impact fees to help offset the contract with harem in for the GMS project of eleven thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars and ten cents.
Second.
So motion made by myself, seconded by Ms. Queenan for the discussion.
Yeah.
I do too.
No, go ahead.
Uh, just something positive from the SIP plan. I mean, they have, what, they put out a thirty-year plan?[1598.78] out a thirty-year plan? I mean, this new group, um, is really being, uh, I don't wanna say a certain, they're, they're really trying to plan ahead. I mean, trying to look thirty years out, and I mean, and this was part of that discussion. So we're, the SIP group is very pleased with what they're coming up with. Before, it just used to be these, you know, wish list kind of thing, but now they're, now they're really trying to plan and budget.
And take care of it, yeah.
They're doing an awesome job.
They really are, yeah. That's all I have, so.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I would, I would just add to it that it doesn't mean that we're endorsing whatever plan it is, 'cause we haven't seen a plan yet. Um, we don't wanna do a blanket endorsement of something we don't see, or we haven't seen. My understanding is it's gonna be something very extensive, but I haven't seen the, the plan itself yet. So I'll vote to expend the fees, but let it be known that it's not an endorsement.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero zero. Next is the abatements, overpayments on the first issue.
Yeah, so these are, um, pretty standard. Um, there's four of them. Um, these are overpayments on the first tax bill. Um, and so we don't have the ability to, um, apply it to the second. These, these need to be refunded, um, to these individuals, and the only, um, method of doing that is through an abatement. Um, so if approved by the selectmen, this form will go to the tax collector, and these parts, amounts will be abated. Um, and they were, um, confirmed by Karen White, the finance director.
If we make a motion, do we gotta read all the abatement totals, or just?
Um, it's eighty-five, ninety-five, uh, one fifty-eight, and fifty-four, so I think one motion's fine.
I'll make a motion to approve the overpayments, the abatements for overpayments happening to, let's see. Uh, first one, abatement total eighty-five dollars for Tax MAP Lot, MAP twenty-two, Lot one oh one. Abatement total of ninety-five dollars for Tax MAP Lot, MAP oh five, Lot one ninety-five. Abatement total of one fifty-eight for Tax MAP, uh, fifteen, Lot fourteen. And abatement total of fifty-four dollars for Tax MAP eleven, Lot twelve. For a total of. That's fine, so that's it. We cover it, we got it.
Four or five hundred dollars total.
So that's my motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Queenan. Any more discussion?
Yeah, I'm gonna abstain. One of these is, uh, family land.
Okay. All right, then, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Three zero one.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, next is the transfer of trust, uh, trustee trust funds. Transfer from the trustee of trust funds, fourteen thousand three hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Yes. So this is for the revaluation, um, that just took place. The contract was eighty-six thousand three hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Um, this is asking the, we have paid Avatar. This is asking the trustee of the trust funds to, um, reimburse the town fourteen thousand three hundred and eighty-eight from the, from the trust. That will cover August and September. Um, three payments left for twenty-one thousand five hundred and eighty-two, which will be made October, November, December.
I make the motion that we move that money from trust back into the town coffers.
I will second it. Motion made by Ms. Plansky, seconded by myself for the discussion.
I'll keep my mouth shut.
Well, I, it's.
No, I know what it's for, and I, and I agree with.
Yeah, but I do wanna raise an issue. I mean, I mean, I think we have the RFP coming up too, but obviously, we've had a lot of feedback about the reevaluations, we've seen a lot of notes. I think we tried very hard to help folks understand where things are. Um, but just know that for the public who may be watching, that we understand, we're hearing you, and we're doing what we can and try to figure some things out, but. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries four zero zero. Uh, economic revitalization zone tax credit. Ms. Kleiner.
So, um, I received a phone call from, um, Mr. Bergeron, um, at BEA. And he said that he was looking at the growth, um, on three A, the northern section of town, and had we considered an economic revitalization zone. Um, and quite frankly, um, I let him know, no, we hadn't looked at it. Um, so this really has no impact to the town, other than the selectmen would have to, um, request it. It, the economic revitalization zone would be granted through the State Bureau of Economics, BEA. Um, and what it does is provides any firm that comes in and, um, buys vacant land or develops vacant land, the opportunity to apply for a tax credit. So it benefits the, um, consume, the commercial developer that's coming in, or the business that is coming in. Um, absolutely no impact to the town economically or budget-wise or, or anything, but it, it is to promote.
Businesses.
Businesses coming into the area. And so, um, what Jay Mancara was looking at for us was what vacant land is there, right? And there's a, there's a few parcels, one, um, that may be under, um, consideration now, but last I knew it was for sale. Um, and then one that is, uh, private property.
So would that be our mixed use?
That's the mixed-use area.
The mixed-use, okay.
Yeah, that would be eligible as well, yeah.
So you'd have to make, you'd have to build a building, and I think you have to have a full-time employee, at least one full-time employee once it's done, right?
Yeah.
That's the other criteria.
But say, um, and I'm just using a, for instance, um, it goes through, we request it, we gotta get the map from NRPC, so it would come back. I just wanna make sure that the board is even in favor of us doing the work. And then we'll come back, we'll present it to you, um, and if you're inclined, we can present it to the BEA and request it upon your vote. Um, but the childcare that might be part of one of the developments down there, say that childcare business comes in, I'm sure they'd have more than one employee, and they could apply if you've, um, requested it.
And the tax credits to their business taxes.
It is.
Okay, so that's why there's no impact to the town, there's no property.
Nope, no.
Well, then I think we should do it.
Yeah. I don't see any downside.
Is there a downside that we're missing?
I don't, I don't think so. I, my only concern, um, at the time that, and it was Mr. Bergeron, who's, uh, Litchfield resident, um, so when he called was how much vacant land needs to be. Um, and it's somewhat, um, mixed. They're generally pretty favorable upon letting, um, even small amounts of zones, um, because they just wanna promote as much economic development as they can and give towns every tool they can to, um, attract them. So we were really one of the only, that's why I put the list out there, we're really one of the only towns.
It doesn't.
That doesn't have one. And many towns have multiple. So, um, so we'll, uh, we'll work with Jay to put together the map, and then bring it right back to you with the formal requests all filled out, and then it, you vote, and we send it up to BEA.
Yeah, see, I'd like to, I, I don't think there's a reason not to do it.
Yep.
So would the two businesses that just went in across the mountains, would they qualify? Or would it be anybody new? Like, are we?
Yeah, it's new.
So we, we can't backdate it for people that like.
Right, it has to be after.
Oh, that's too bad.
Yeah, it's too bad, but.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, but the other development on the corner of Albuquerque and/or the other possibility near St. Francis, those get qualified.
Right.
Okay.
And I, I have to thank Mr. Bergeron for reaching out to tell us about this.
All right, so you'll investigate, figure it out, and we'll approve whatever gets sent to the state, so.
Yeah.
All right, moving on, the RFP for assessing services. That's on our portal.
And we would like, if the, if this is the, um, way the board would like to go, we'd like to get this out, um, as soon as possible. Um, I, you know, have received information from Avatar on a possible five-year, um, contract. I know we discussed at least looking, um.
Two or three others.
Yes.
Yeah.
So we could get this up and.
As many others as we can.
Yeah, I think it's.
Along with references from the towns that have done business with them so far.
Yeah, that's all in here, requesting all of that.
Okay.
Bring it back to you and.
Thank you.
So you want, do you want a motion to approve the RFP, or just a?
Uh, yes, please. Um, by purchasing policy, the board needs to approve it.
I do have a question. Why was, I, I understand Sansoucy, but why was explicitly, why is it explicitly in there? Why is, why was that in the second paragraph about the summary? It says we use Avatar, right? And we're gonna retain George Sansoucy, right?
Right. We, the town uses that Avatar Kama system, and that's important to any, um, assessing firm that is going to possibly bid, because they.
They have their own platform.
Yeah, they might. So Vision has Vision.
They can be comparable.
And, um, sometimes firms won't bid if they are being asked to work on a, a foreign Kama system.
Okay.
That's Avatar, that's the software, that's not Avatar the firm.
Okay.
Uh, but it is important for them also to know that we are not asking them to do the utilities, because we have Mr. Sansoucy, because some assessing firms don't do utilities. It's kind of a specialized.
Okay. Just wanna know why it was in there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we authorize the RFP for appraisal services to be sent out immediately and due back to the town on December eleventh, twenty twenty-five, by nine o'clock.
Yeah, it's a short turnaround, so, um, I do have a list of all the assessing firms, and we will, um, send it out to them immediately.
Do I have a second? Second by Ms. DeLeary. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero zero. So now, permit for metal detection.
So unfortunately, um, part of the policy is that the request gets sent out to all of the boards and commissions that manage property. Um, that was done, um, after conferring, um, with them, we would recommend denial. Uh, this is part of the property that is requested as private property, um, and other is historic, and we would.
Okay.
Plus that you deny it.
Did everyone have a good chance to see it?
I have. I make a motion that we do not accept the.
All right, so I'll, uh, Ms. Plansky made a motion to deny the permit.
Second.
And seconded by Mr. DeLeary. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Detection permit has been denied.
Thank you.
Okay. Discussion on moving the last one, last topic, I think, or the one, second to last topic, is going to be discussion of warrant articles unassigned fund balance. Ms. Kleiner.
Okay, so, um, we have a, a, a group of warrant articles, and so I know that the Budget Committee has asked that we have the warrant articles, um, for the first, um, Thursday in December.
Correct.
And, that, so that really leaves you one more meeting after this, right? Um, and we think it's important that we start to talk about, um, having as few, but the ones that are really important. And so, um, we know the police vehicles, um, it's an absolute must, but I think we've talked about, um, not going with six, reducing it to three.
Yep.
Um, and, and so we've had that discussion with the chief. There are some others. The road agent requested for the two hundred thousand in additional paving. Um, we asked for, um, uh, the revision of the fire truck expendable trust, and, um, after talking to legal, we would actually, um, ask that that be removed. Um, and we move more towards creating the capital reserve fund, 'cause we think that's more important, where we have money that's set aside and could be possibly fire, possibly police, possibly highway, but that we start to build up that fund to really take care of all of our vehicle and equipment needs.
Okay.
Um, then the town clerk has one that's more, um, just a position that is going to a full-time, so, um, it's relatively small money, but it's raising that position that we spoke about at budget time. The fire has one, um, that they have requested, uh, for the two per diem firefighters. Um, and that's a larger ask, and has a more of a tax impact, um, to it. Then there's our standard. And see, this is where we start to get into a, 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 a number of them, because we have the ambulance revolving fund, um, which needs more money. These gen, are the ones we generally do from unassigned fund balance.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the ambulance revolving, the general assistance, um, the health agencies, which are some of the groups that the veterans were talking about, that we'll ask to have at our resource. Um, I have reached out, and, um, so April Weber is the.
Casa.
Is, well, she's our community, our citizens rep. Um, so it's the welfare administrator, the health inspector, and the citizens rep, and we are reviewing all of those health agency requests, and then we will make recommendations, um, and I hope to have those for your next meeting. Um, then there's the, next one is the town, from the town clerk, but it's because of a change in state law. It's allowing the supervisors of the checklist to now be just a three-year term, um, which the town clerk suggests, um, because the, I think it's six now, right? Five or six?
Right.
That's a long time for someone to make a commandment. Um, the recreation commission has asked for fifty thousand to be added to their expendable trust. Um.
Conservation.
Conservation has asked, and that, well, I'll leave that one. Um, then there's the exemptions and credits that they, the veterans spoke, spoke about. The veterans credit, what we're gonna do with, with that, and then the elderly. And so what, this is a group that we've been hearing a lot from. Remember that as the elderly, as their assessments grew, the same exemption is not impacting them the way that it would. And what we've seen is not only within Litchfield, but many towns, um, look at the elderly exemption amount and raise it when they've had a very high, um, assessment change. So you did it in twenty twenty, after that revale, and I think we wanna take a look at the numbers and see if it makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then, um, le, the legal fees revolving fund was one that came up, um, during budget.
Right.
Discussions. I did hear back, um, yesterday afternoon, um, from legal counsel, and I need to get a hold of the DRA, because basically on the conservation, um, it's wha, what I thought was that it can't be the land fund.
Right.
She agrees.
Okay.
Um, can't be the land fund. The only, um, RSA that allows any money to go into the land fund, other than donations and things, is the RSA thirty-six A five, and that's only for land use change tax. So she says the same thing, use, um, the farm capital reserve, or even better, she would suggest creating an agricultural property maintenance trust fund.
Can we rename the one we have?
No.
You gotta close it out, right?
You gotta close it.
So we can move the money that's in that and move it to this agricultural maintenance?
Right. The only problem is, there, this, this is really odd. You can't open an expendable trust fund without money to put in it.
So we have the five thousand, and from the other, we can move that right over.
You have to, but you have to, you have to close it and get it authorized with voters to move it. So if it's no, you won't have the fund to fund it, right?
Right.
But can't we just fund the, with a, with a, this easy five thousand dollars and just say we're gonna fund it with the five thousand dollars, and if this other one passes, the other five gets deposited?
Yep, you could do that.
Or it's start with some dollar amount, right?
Right.
So that creates the fund, and then we get money into it.
Where would it come from?
Unassigned.
Could come from unassigned, I mean.
It's gonna be hard to pass off to the voters. You gotta, you know, they recently had one point three million, I think, that we're gonna take on assigned funds to fund a, a, a new account. I'm just saying, that's gonna be a tough sell to the voters. There's still a lot of money in that account now.
It's five thousand dollars.
No, 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 no. In, in the, in the conservation fund now, you have how much money?
Seven hundred and fifty.
Seven, yeah, it's six fifty.
That's to buy land.
And we're gonna ask. And we're gonna ask
To buy land.
And what's this gonna be for?
This is gonna be leases, money from leases that have been collected, that are gonna be used to maintain those, the agricultural fields, those agricultural fields.
Yeah, so we collect
We, we put it in the gen, in the general fund right now.
Yeah, it's always gone in the general fund.
Right, so it doesn't need to go there, because it's really not used for the general fund. It's used for
Can you fund it with a dollar?
But, do we even have to do that? Can't we just not do that? Take it in as revenue, and then show it as revenue, showing it as an offset in the conservation's budget?
Yes.
Don't create a fund at all. We're taking in two thousand dollars in revenue, that's what it is, and we're offsetting it in the budget. So the budget put two thousand dollars for maintenance, we're offsetting it, so it's zero to the taxpayers.
It is zero to the taxpayers.
The only, the only issue is we can't control what the money gets used for.
So that's the other thing. It is not, you cannot say, no impact to the tax rate. And here's the reason why. And I'm gonna say this, it's, could be point zero 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 nine. But, it is an impact. Because it, the, the equation is your expenditures less your revenues is the amount raised by taxes with veterans credits and overlay in there too. But, so if you're taking this money away from revenue in the general fund
So we're removing it from the general fund?
You are definitely impacting, cause now that amount
That two thousand dollar amount.
by taxation with the voters.
Okay, that makes sense. But it really always should have been, I mean, to me, it was misapplied to general. It should always have been, if conservation is, is taking that money, is using no money, you know, other money, other taxpayer money, for it. It's, it's money that should be used by conservation to, to maintain those lands.
So, I think what we've seen, so what I went and I was
Did I say that right?
I was looking at other towns, and other towns that are like buying conservation supplies, or buying equipment, it's out of the operating budget.
Right, but we don't have, we don't get an operating budget.
But I think that's what we're saying, is if we took that revenue and more applied it to the operating budget, we could up the operating budget. The only problem with that is
And it has to go through budgeting. But this is already, this is a lease that we charge for land that we purchased and need to maintain, that is agricultural only. This is the, this is Charlie's land, or our land, that Charlie rents down at the River Access. And the Durocha property that we just bought. And we only have one lease there that we're looking for, for money, that the town hasn't received before. And then the other lease, we're looking to do an in-kind kind of work donation type of thing. We need a ton of work done on the land, in the ditches, et cetera. To make sure that we've got that land operating the way it needs to be.
Yeah.
So this new fund brings in the money from the lease, and then you can deduct lawn mower, anything else like that?
Gas, if we need, if we need to hire somebody.
So, it would not be automatic. You, you can't do it automatic. You would have to each year have a, a warrant article
To put money in there?
To appropriate the money to
As a lease.
To the, yeah.
But why haven't we had to do that for the general fund? That confused.
Cause lease, cause it's town land. It's town land, leases from town land goes to the general fund. There's, there's an actual line for reporting revenue.
Can't we, can't the warrant be constructed where it says specifically these two leases? All revenue received because of it goes in the fund, without them, that we do it every year?
She's saying that each year, you would have to have an article to appropriate the money from the leases into either the farmland or the new one.
There's no other way to make it automatic? Cause it's just gonna be warrant fatigue, if we keep on putting those out there?
Just like you couldn't say, every year, we're gonna put twenty-five thousand into the recreation expendable trust. You can't do that.
Aye.
You can't.
You have to ask permission?
Right, they, they call it locking in the voters. Right, so you can't lock it in other voters for multiple years, they have the right
But we did it for current use, I guess that's by RSA anyway, right?
That's by our, that's by the RSA thirty-six A five, allows you to do it with the land use change tax, only to
So what do you advise? What's the easiest way to make sure that conservation gets credit for that lease money, to use it, to, to take care of the property?
Easiest way, without having to do a warrant article?
I don't mind doing a warrant article. I don't mind people knowing that it's happening, I think that they should know it, it's happening.
Yeah.
Well, I had, I had suggested just create another, another account. That's all it goes, and we just, again, show us revenue, show us that, and hold the conservation commission held them to responsibility, they don't use it for those lands. Right, and then
They, they do those QR codes.
Yeah, through the budget.
They do an amazing job of accounting where everything goes.
No, and I agree, I just
They use those QR codes, we could have a special QR code that was just agricultural land. I mean, we probably don't spend much on the, the agricultural land that's at the river right now, cause Charlie is doing everything that might change. When we ha, you know, another farmer might take it over, or whatever, that may change. But for the way it's been working, it's unlikely that we have to do a tremendous amount, we do some mowing down there. But the Durocha property hasn't been worked in a very long time. And they do some, Charlie has some, town, Hudson has some, Alveron Farm has some. But there's a lot of land that's back there that has not been worked. And he took us by every single, I mean, you would think that he was showing you his dirty laundry. You know, he's like, I used to do this, but I haven't been able to do that. But, so we knew, there was full disclosure of everything that occurred. But we know that there's work that needs to be done down there.
I mean, I think it's, the easiest way to do it is through the budget, like we do zoning. Right, so, we have the revenue that comes in, and we, it offsets the zoning budget. So, if we specified that this revenue is coming in, and we're offsetting it
Budget committee hates to give us any money, because we have money to buy land. But that's what it's supposed to be for, is to buy land, that so that the animals that live in town, and, and everything else in town, you know, has room to breathe. And we can protect the land and the, and the habitat where we live. So that's what that's supposed to be for, and the town has expressed that's an important thing for them. Makes it Litchfield. In the survey that we did, you'll recall, what the, what the people said, is that that was like top priority, is that it's is that it's agricultural and, and wide open, so
I, I think that the budget needs to be increased by whatever those leases are, but
Well, maybe we can say that, maybe we can say that.
But that's hard, because we're getting
Then that has to be part of the tax cap, too. When in actuality, it's lease money that's coming in, it's revenue.
Right.
The land next to the, I don't wanna name who's doing that, but the contract that we have with the, next to the River Access that's being farmed, there was a contract this year. Do they have to go back every year?
Every year.
Mm-hmm.
They go to warrant article every year?
No, we don't do
No, a lease agreement. The lease agreement has to be yearly. You can't do a multi-year lease.
Alright, so they don't have to come back all the time, but conservation does?
They come to us every year, we approve it.
We approved it, that, so why is conservation different? Cause the, the town owns the land, right? Conservation's managing it obviously, right? Why is there a different process? Why do, why do they have to go back every year?
Well, they're asking to have that money put into a separate fund, that they have, you know, control
So we need to put a warrant article that says, we wanna decrease the general fund by two thousand dollars, or whatever the lease is. That it will, can be used to maintain those properties. So that's basically what the warrant article has to say, and then we have to put it in an account. And people have to say whether or not they want us to do that, or if they wanna leave it in the general fund.
Right, to open a trust, to have it be a separate trust, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what is making the new name do? Separate, making it separate?
Yeah, so legal was suggesting an agricultural property maintenance expendable trust. Which kinda tells the taxpayers that this money will be used for property maintenance.
Yep.
Versus agreeing with Mrs. Plansky, that land fund really is for land purchases.
I agree with that.
Right.
So you're telling the public the money is gonna be used for whatever you have to do to maintain the property? But how is it being funded?
It would be funded from the leases.
Alright, so then that's legal
By lease revenue.
So that one account handles both? The, the lease and the maintenance, if we switch over to that?
It would, the revenue portion would be the money coming in.
Right.
And then the expenses would be
The same, that one account would do that?
From that, yeah, from that one account.
Why isn't that the easier solution?
Let's do that, let's, let's, let's do it like that.
Okay, I'll ask.
But I would like to move the five thousand dollars that's there. That's sitting in that agricultural fund, that's our money.
So that means another warrant article to close that fund.
Yep. Can you make it part of all the same warrant article?
No, it would have to be two separate, yeah.
To move that to, if, if, so it would be like a, if above is approved, we'd like to close this account and put the money in the account above. Because of that, we don't wanna close it.
I thought we weren't, we, we're not creating an account now, we're creating a, a county account, right? Not a fund?
Well, I think she wants a
Fund.
A fund.
I think you're better off with the fund.
But you have to ask every year, and there's a year they can say no to you?
Yep.
Okay. And then the two thousand will drop to general fund, and you won't have access to it?
Right.
Okay.
Like it, like it is right now.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
But, I mean
And you can put that in the warrant article, this, this warrant appears yearly.
Maybe if it was you're talking fifty thousand dollar leases?
Right, then it would matter.
But you're talking two thousand dollars, or, or with one, nine hundred dollars, because
Yeah, I mean, it's like, it's closer to eighteen than it is two thousand.
Yeah, so, I, I just
I mean, the purpose is to keep agriculture moving in town. It's not to collect a million dollars, and it's to support what happens. I mean, the lease money should be going back into agriculture. That's what we want.
Yeah.
That's why we collect money from it.
Does the warrant have to actually say the amount, the amount? Can it not just say money received from agricultural leases?
I think you would wanna say it, so they know it's minimum.
I think you have to have the amount, so we have
I would say up to five, in case we end up doing something different with Alveron. But my, my intention in my discussions with conservation has been that that the educational farm work at Alveron will come in and work on the farm as part of their program. That's what I'm intending to get, and want to get.
So I think
If you're listening, that's what I want.
I think, I think Mr. Brenner was right. The warrant article has to say, you know, nine hundred from lease so-and-so, and, and
Yeah, it can.
Fifteen hundred from lease so-and-so.
Yep.
Yeah.
It can.
But we'll get the, I'll get the exact wording from the DRA.
And if you can do an up to amount. Cause I don't know, we may, we may not work that out with Alveron. We may work out that they just wanna give us a dollar amount, you don't wanna
Yeah, and so if we haven't
If we could do it, and I'm up to five thousand
If we haven't moved it
Cause they wouldn't get the same deal that, that probably Charlie's getting, because they aren't a Litchfield resident.
Right.
Alright.
So
So, I did put figures out there for the exemptions and credits. And to kinda show you the impact of what would be done. I would say that in 2020, I mean, I think a lot of these things have been petitioned.
Yep.
Warrant articles in the past. So I'm looking for some direction from the selectmen on, on what you wanna do, and how you wanna
I'm one person, but I think we should come forward with it, and, and do what's right for the, for, for both the elderly and the veterans. I think there's a, you know, times are tough, yes, I get, and they need help, and we should be helping them, period.
So we take the seven oh five in the, what is that, seven oh five?
Are we doing the veterans one first? When we do the veterans?
I didn't know we were ready to do that.
This is, um
Seven oh five is fourteen fifty.
I was, I made a couple, just one suggestion. I think at first, we were, before, we were like, we looked at the revaluation, we were wondering if we should move the income amounts. But the income amounts aren't changing. It's the assessment amounts that are changing. So we went, in 2020, up thirty-five thousand. So, see the exemption amount for the sixty-five to seventy-four year old? In 2020, that was fifty. And we raised it to eighty-five. I think if we take it to one twenty-five, we're staying in line with what the assessments are doing.
Let me see where you are, I just wanna make sure I'm on the same
Is that sixty percent?
You don't
Yeah, I don't have that.
Is it one we have?
I see eighty-five, okay. It's above and below, okay.
See where the elderly exemption
Yeah, I got that.
Go to the right.
Twenty fourteen, twenty ten.
You got it?
Yep, 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 yep.
So, if, I'm giving you the current exemption amount, and then some recommendations for a proposed, and then what those increases would be, and then the tax impact. Which, you really gotta remember, these are exemptions, so they come off the assessment. So, it lowers your valuation, but it, it doesn't which washes out in the tax rate, but it's not the same as like a credit, which is so and that's, that tax impact is only based on the number of what we have right now. Knowing in the future, right, that could change, you could have more people that qualify. Right now, we have thirty-nine? Yep, thirty-nine. That currently qualify.
What is this asset limit? I know you talked to me about it.
So the asset limit is, they can't have more than three hundred thousand dollars in assets. You know, whether it's cash accounts, um
Outside of their house?
Primary home store, yeah.
Yeah, their primary residence does not count as
Okay.
one of those assets.
Up to an acre, if they have more than an acre, that would count in there.
Okay.
Correct. Yep.
And if they have more than one house, then
Cause I think there was a one acre minimum on that.
Yeah, it's the strangest thing, so if you, if they have five acres in Litchfield with their house on it, four acres of that does count as an asset. Cause it was only up to their house and one acre.
Oh, okay, so, I was just saying, most of our, most of our lots are over an acre, as it is.
No, it's kinda strange, right?
You could subdivide it and sell it for a lot of money.
Yeah.
Here.
Here.
Most of, most of the things I'm seeing is, you said the average went up on a certain type of home. What was that, did it go up how much? Was it like forty thousand, sixty thou, what was that?
The
Percent?
The worst
Thousands of dollars.
Sixty percent, was it?
The worst increases were to the lower valued homes. Mobile homes got hit.
Yeah, they Really bad.
Bad. Really bad.
Yep.
And a lot of those people have like an elderly exemption. So if we're giving them eighty-five, right? But their assessment just jumped a hundred and fifty, that's not helping.
So they have housing instability costs, I'm not talking health and sharing So they have housing instability costs, I'm not talking health insurance, food, all that, if we're just looking at the reassessment. Throwing them into a housing instability issue, for that group, for that group. And not that, anybody, anybody, I, I know people that you would think are wealthy and they are in trouble.
Because of this, I agree.
Just because of, and just the cost of living in general, so we can't solve the world problems, but I'm just saying, if, if a certain group went up fifty thousand dollars and we up the limit. Maybe, but, but we can't do it every year.
Right, and I fully understand, so exemptions and credits take, you know, give a benefit to some. And raise the rates for the others, I get that, but this is.
Didn't we have people, did we have residents whose tax bills went down? Was it a third?
Can you tell me?
Wasn't mine.
Okay, so, I hear is where.
Of course, we're not hearing from those people.
Cause I've been doing this all day, this is just wonderful, alright.
I know you're blue.
Um, on.
What do you call it, non-social media?
Non-social media.
Anti-social media.
Anti-social media?
Stop it.
Um, there's, there's been a lot of conversation about this, um. So, the tax effort is the tax effort, it's a tax effort. The amount of money that we need to raise by taxes. And that is based on the budget and the warrant articles and the revenues and all that. Regardless of whether you had a revow or not, the tax effort's the same tax effort, the same tax effort. So, I hear.
I wanna know how many houses went down in Texas.
That's gonna take a lot more, um, yeah, that's gonna take. So, um, here's an example, um. For, but this is. The new assessment, um, versus what would have happened if. There wasn't a revaluation, that's what this is showing you, so if there wasn't a revaluation. Would still be raising twenty eight million, one hundred and three, still be raising, but your tax rate would be twenty two point six nine. That'd be your tax rate. So figure out, with your old assessment. And twenty two sixty nine.
Where's my phone?
Would your taxes have gone up? Yes, right, because the tax rate was twenty seventy eight.
Twelve hundred dollars, though?
It, yeah, it, it would have, it.
It would have gone up the same amount.
It, yes, the, it doesn't, it doesn't matter, the ta- tax effort is the tax effort.
I get it, I get it.
Yeah.
I get it, so if we take and apply that fourteen twenty to every house that's in our database. As of today.
Yep.
And look at their tax bills, then we're gonna come up with that twenty eight.
Yep, you got it, yep.
That's still, that's still working.
Yes, yes, so all the revaluation does is redistribute it.
So if mine went up twelve hundred.
And I think this was a question on Facebook is, how much were we raising? We're still raising the twenty eight, yeah, it, we're not getting any extra money, it's just redistributed differently, and so like. You know, mobile homes are paying more.
Looking through this chart.
Call it fuzzy math.
Look at this chart, the town. The mun- the municipal piece of our tax rate, our tax.
I don't wanna talk about it like that.
But I know, but hang on a second, but it's, it's, we're talking about a two hundred thousand dollar difference between twenty twenty three and twenty twenty five. The school has raised.
I don't want to do that, please don't do that. We are as a town.
We are a town.
We're, we're the part of both holes, so to, to rip out one part, I, I understand.
We're the ones that catch most of the flag, we catch ninety percent.
Well, it's not about the.
That's not true, that's not true either.
Yeah, I don't. I, I do think people don't understand the town's school structure, and I agree.
Well, no, I think what has, what has actually shown that people didn't understand, if you followed along in the math. Was that people didn't understand that their July tax bill was an estimate.
Yeah, they don't wanna say that.
That was deemed to be the biggest sticking point, so that when they saw the five thousand dollar tax bill, they said, okay. So my taxes are actually ten thousand dollars now, when in fact, they had spent three thousand dollars in July. And two thousand dollars of this five thousand dollar bill is from what they didn't pay.
Correct.
In July.
Yeah.
And that's the part that brought the most tension to the page, cause then they're like, well, you're splitting hairs, and I'm like. No, I'm not splitting hairs, I'm trying to get to the, the real number, so that I can say to you, this is really what happened. Because we went to that twenty eight million dollar budget, or whatever it is, and it was going to be. You were gonna go up that twelve hundred and fifty dollars anyway.
Right.
That's what I wanna be able to get to, and when you and I sit down and we do our fireside chat, which I think we're gonna call table talk. I don't know, we're, I'm still looking at different, different one to call it, I wanna be able to say to the people that are out there. This is the amount of money that we had to collect, regardless, because here's your, here's your, um, your town meeting. Numbers from last year, so in order to spread that across the number of houses that we have. We had to change the tax rate to this, so, so it, it wouldn't matter if I said your house was worth five million dollars. I still have to collect twenty eight million, what's tough for me is to look at these people that are. Making less money, that are living in less popu- you know, less extravagant. Situations that are bearing so much of the increase.
Because this is, so, I think what people are saying was, they're, they're taking. Their old assessment times the old tax rate. And they're saying their new assessment and the new tax rate is more, well, yes, but you're not comparing apples to apples.
I guess my biggest question was though, was still, are we collecting more than what we said as a town, we were going to collect? Right, and so, and so, this is all, so when we had our July tax bill go out, we hadn't gotten our evaluation, we hadn't gotten our. Our tax rate, so we had to come up with a number, and what we took was the tax rate from the prior year, and took half of that.
Well, that's state law, so in July, you can only send out.
Came up with that July number, so when they look at their tax bill of, of, say it's actually eight thousand dollars. In July, when they get their next tax bill, it isn't gonna be five thousand dollars, it might be four. Whatever half of that, their actual tax rate is, is that correct?
It's going to be the tax rate, the fourteen twenty. Times.
Whatever their assessment is.
Divided by two.
Yep, that's what I was saying, that's exactly what I'm saying.
Exactly what it's.
So it's gonna be, everybody's like, well, your taxes aren't gonna be less next July, and I'm like, yes, they are.
No, it won't, it'll be.
Sure they will. No.
No, because.
It'll be a little bit less, yeah.
Because, because you're looking at.
Because what you didn't pay in July is on this December tax bill.
So your tax bill isn't fifty percent of your fourteen twenty, times your assessment, Bob, it's.
Normally it is, but.
And, and you will, I will tell you that some of the smartest people in town have called me and said, oh my god, I got my tax bill. Next year, it's gonna, you know, and now it's gonna be double that, I'm gonna be paying that in July, and I'm like, nope, nope, your tax is. The assessment times fourteen point two, divided by two, plus whatever you didn't pay in July.
And so, I think the important part is when people are asking the question of. Did my taxes go up or down?
You need some information from them.
Your taxes were gonna go up, right, no matter what, forget the revow, take the revow completely off the table. If the revow didn't happen, your tax, your tax rate would have been twenty two sixty nine. Which is based on, and I did this, I pulled this.
But actually, these people paying more over here should have pulled some away from the people that were paying.
So like this, this first house, this is real assessment, right, it took real values. At three hundred and forty five thousand, at the twenty two sixty nine, which would have been the tax rate. They would have paid fourteen forty five. For just the town portion, seven, uh, thousand eight hundred and twenty eight for the full bill, right? They, that's what their full year bill would have been, but their assessment went up to five fifty, tax rate came down to fourteen twenty. Their full year bill's only seventy eight ten, now granted, they, it's only eighteen bucks less, but. It's less than it would have been, but what they don't understand is the tax rate would have gone up. They're taking the tax rate, the July tax rate, you can't do that.
Right, 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 yep.
And so, prior to doing the revaluation, I pulled. The town assessment, because I wanted to see what it would have gone up without the revow, and that's where I got this number. That's why it says I, I put from May, I did that, got that number, which was just the growth from. The new development on, and so that I could figure out what the tax rate would, would have been if there was.
But all those new homes should have driven the tax rate down, I mean, there's a hundred and eighty in one place, and sixty here, and thirty there. Should have driven the tax rate down a little, right?
Um, except for you got this right here.
What's that?
See where my little thing is?
No. The sat.
Local education.
Local education, I, so, I, I know you don't wanna bring it up, but I, but let me.
I just don't, I, I mean, we're a town, we're.
We are a town, let me just, let me just say what I'm gonna say, so, I, as an individual, am very supportive of the schools. I have no issue with the school part of it, my problem is, is that the town keeps on getting all lumped together into two separate entities. And the town can't continue to suffer because they're upset with the school budget, yes, we need to fix it, and yes, we need to support it. But I, we can't have this, the town go down with the school again, because they, they're worried about the increases in the school side.
I agree.
We're suppo- I mean, the school has to function, we need our kids educated, and we need to do the right thing, and I don't know if that number's right or wrong. That's what they're asking for, and I'm supportive, I, I'm paying my taxes too, but. When the town's budget is really over three, four years, only increased in total tax effort is only two hundred thousand dollars. Think the town's done a great job trying to keep our budget flat, with bringing in more revenue and, and all that stuff that offset it, but. I wanna go in as a town, we're one entity, but it's not how it gets portrayed, because people are out there going, if we don't get a new school, we're not voting anything in. That's not the right way to think about it.
Well, it would be great when they have a problem at the school and they, we don't have any police to drive home.
That's exactly my fear.
Have to take the bicycles, I get it, our infrastructure is suffering, I get it, I get it. But you have to, you have to remember that, whether the people wanna say it's the town or the schools. That's the, the nugget that's hurting their wallet, and I don't wanna be fighting with the schools anymore.
We don't wanna fight the school neither, and I'm not trying to fight the school, again, I'm supportive.
I don't wanna.
And I, and I know there's been a lot of questions, I received one. I'm pointing people to the school, I can't speak for their tax rate.
Right.
They need to speak for it, I do know they lost like four hundred thousand dollars in adequate aid, which is happening all over the place.
Yeah.
That has to be raised by taxation now, right, it was state money.
Yeah.
I mean, everybody who plays the lottery, please be asking where your lottery money is.
And the other thing is like people, I, you spend some questions, this been, this been questions on Face, on social media about. What we should be looking at for grants, and I just laid out, these are all the grants that the town has actually taken in over the last four years, that has allowed us to buy a truck and do this and do this and do this. We are doing that, those opportunities are always there.
Right.
And we don't have a full-time grant writer neither, we, you know, we're trying to do the best we can, but we do take advantage of it.
Actually, a new program that just came out to get people to learn how to write grants from the, um, conservation.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Did you see that?
I saw it, I saw it, um, cause the public safety do it all the time.
Somebody who's gonna jump on, Jay's exhausted still from what he did to try to get the tour to land.
U N H has a fabulous program, that's where I, um, studied grant management and was U N H, and. They have a certificate program, it's wonderful.
And you offered to go forward and, and help, um, the heritage, not the heritage.
Yeah, I mean.
To try, we need to get those grants, I mean, we do, but we, we do look at grants as a board, as individual town.
And that's, that was what I, that was the messaging I was trying to say, if you know of some, we don't take a vote, let's figure it out.
So I think, this is why I put this on, and I, and I think we need to put this probably on the website, um. But we, we need to start pointing people to the website, um. You know, there was a, a request for the, um, information. And everybody's assessment in an Excel spreadsheet. I'm gonna tell you why we generally don't, it's generally a common rule, that, that municipalities put out things in P D Fs, why?
So, so it can't be manipulated.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just not, it's just not good practice.
Yeah, you can, you can take the PDF and, like, in Excel if you want to, but.
Well, I'm sure, but it's more work, but here's what the, this is what the D R A says, this is, this is a three finger rule. Everybody who's studied municipal government learns about the three finger rule.
Cause we got a lot of them sitting in this room.
A mescaline.
So, every cent on the tax rate is nineteen thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. So if your budget goes up, call it twenty grand, depending.
Yeah.
So, that's one way that taxpayers could figure it out, if they, if they wanted to. They could look at, what's the budget increase, right? If, if someone's budget is going up a million nine, you just add a doll- a dollar to the tax rate. That, that's big, right, so, but that's one way that the D R A has kinda taught people. To think about, if you wanna estimate what your tax rate is gonna be, that's what they call the three finger rule, so. Um, it's your valuation and backing out for a thousand hundred ten cents, so. Um, there is a property relief at the, at the state. But it doesn't come out until May, so you can't apply for it until May. Um, but we are giving that information to people so that, um, they keep an eye on it.
Alright, who brought the dog?
And, you know, I.
Damn dog, it's not trained.
It's, it's hard, um, one of the good things is if we're looking at warrant articles. Our, um, on a sign, did it go up?
We got a lot coming out of here, though.
Um.
So I'm not happy with.
Yeah, so it's three six, which is eleven point four five, it increased four hundred and twenty, uh, four thousand seven hundred and fifty. From last year. So, our policy is eight to twelve, we're still within our policy, but we're on the high end of it. Um, don't think that any's going there from this default budget. Um, because if we are estimating correctly, we are going to be very close, and I know that the budget committee doesn't believe me. But, we're close, gonna be close.
If they're following the budget, if they're following the budget report, they'll see that it's getting close.
Yeah, I mean, since.
It's making me nervous.
It's making me nervous, it, it is.
It's making me nervous, I, I agree.
So.
It's keeping me up.
Where do we want to go with warrant articles, we have, like you said, we have one more meeting before we, uh, we owe them to the budget committee.
Well, we gotta figure out this elderly one, right?
Yeah, I think, it, I mean, if we wanna go back to that one and just hash out what that should look like, so we can get the wording done and put that in the official doc.
Yeah, I mean, I'll go ahead and, and, and work with legal over the next week to get all the official language, put it in an actual warrant levy.
Conservation.
Yeah, every, all of them.
All of them, okay.
Figure out, remember, if they have multiple tax impact, we gotta list five years. That's the new law.
Yep.
I think people are just trying to create. I think people are just trying to create more work for us, cause I don't think that's gonna make a big.
All right, let's, um.
We have one more meeting, so we can.
One more meeting.
Let's figure out the vets and then we'll figure out the the vets, where, how much, how much are they getting if they get both? Fourteen fifty?
Fourteen fifty-five.
So they are losing the seven fifty.
Okay.
Right.
And.
That's for the disabled vets.
Right, for the disabled. Correct. So, again, you're only talking thirty-six. We only have thirty-six. Um, and the question is do you wanna add the seven fifty, or do you want to actually, you can go up to four thousand dollars by the Hampshire law?
So they're currently having, have two different ones, and now you can't do two different ones, so.
Correct.
What are they currently getting? If they get both, they get twenty-five fifty?
Fourteen fifty-five.
Forty, forty-five.
If they get both?
They get both, they're getting the seven.
And of the thirty-six, how many are getting both?
Uh, thirty-six.
All thirty-six are getting both?
Yes.
And there's only thirty-six vets?
Yeah, there's only thirty-six disabled, yeah.
So they get seven hundred and five now, plus seven fifty? And which one's staying?
Does, um, so they lose the seven fifty.
Okay.
They lose that, they can't.
So they're at seven hundred. So they're at seven hundred.
So, the idea is, do you wanna add the seven fifty to what they have? Um, most places, and I gave you the, the data up above, um, for the disabled, uh, we're at seven hundred. Most, a lot of them are four? Or at least twenty-four hundred?
So.
If you look at the table above for.
Is this off their tax bill?
Yeah.
This takes their house value and takes it down?
Nope, that's an exemption. Credit, uh, credits actual money.
So I would think that if they're fourteen fifty, now we have to at least make them home.
Mm-hmm.
And then the tax rate's gone up.
Mm-hmm.
But we just got an increase for them last year, right? How much did the tax increase cost for them last year?
No, yeah, a few.
Was it a few years ago?
Like, three or four years ago.
Three or four, yeah. Cause that was when I first came, I think, three years ago.
And this is just for the disabled?
Yes, this is just disabled. It's not changing anyone else, um. And I will say, it's a very I don't know the word I'm looking for. They have to been, have been
So they went for.
Disabled by the veterans, and that's not an easy process. Let me put it that way. It's, it's a very difficult process to become.
Only disabled by the veterans.
They want up to four.
If it's four thousand dollars, and if you minus out the two they're getting now, which is one, four, five, five, right? That's twenty-five forty-five.
Correct.
Times thirty-six people, right?
Yep.
Ninety-one thousand, six twenty.
So what if we go up to three thousand? We don't get those police cars.
Yeah, you wanna?
I would be, I would be willing to go to three.
I figured out.
It's still.
Fifty-five, six twenty.
It's double what they're getting right now.
Fifty-five, six twenty.
Change that to three?
I got fifty-five, six twenty.
So that's three sixty-seven.
Three thousand, minus one.
Instead of three eleven, five thirteen. God, I'm so good with this.
I got like fifty-five.
I love my little Chromebook. I won't say anything about my little Chromebook.
Fifty-five, eight. Is that what you had, bro?
If we went up, if we went up a thousand, though, it would be thirty-six thousand. We went up, right?
So, if you changed this.
Oh, it's more than a thousand. I know, it's like fifteen hundred. It's doubling it.
Mm-hmm.
And this is the warrant article for the people to say whether or not they wanna do it. What happens if the people say no?
Stays where it's at, right?
No, it doesn't stay where it's at because they can't get the seven fifty. So if we go too high, and people say no, then they lose seven hundred and fifty dollars. They go back down to seven.
They go to seven, yeah, you don't wanna do that.
You don't wanna make it too high if people say no.
Thousand dollars, if you do, take it to three, it's three cents on the tax rate. See? So it's, right now it's.
So when they look down at the bottom where it says tax impact, it would be point oh-three? I, I think that, that that is something that as a taxpayer, I would look at and say, for our veterans, would I pay three thousand, three dol, three cents more? A thousand on my taxes? I would say yes. I might not, that's just me, that's just me.
It's the voters that have to approve it.
So if they, if they don't think it's worth it, they can say no.
That's right.
So if they do, then they're really hurting our ta, our.
So, so let's just, let's be option B then.
So what do you think? Are you thinking three, or?
I'm fine with three. I'd go four, but.
I don't think we should. I, I just think that if people see that we're more than doubling it in a year where we're looking for everything.
People should, people should reflect on what these servicemen have done.
Sweetheart, they are. That's why they've, that's why they voted it in, but they're having problems in their own homes as well, you know?
Well, I'm, I'm a couple of three too.
Say no, then, then, then we've, they've lost seven hundred and fifty dollars a year in credit. They're getting nothing and they're losing something.
I, I agree with that, but I do think if you say thirty-six veterans disabled.
I think you'd have to say that in the, in the tax rate would be point oh-three.
If we can count.
In the language of, on the ballot.
Then forget it. Then that's.
In the voter guide.
We can, in the voter guide.
Yeah.
In the voter guide, we can definitely.
And we can also say that if we, if this doesn't get voted through, I, then that holds them hostage.
And we cannot deliberate it, but we can't in the language of the warrant.
Yeah, we can't even, if they don't pass it, they, we can't say the losing benefits, right?
I'm sure Bobby would be promoting it, whatever it is.
Well, and we have the resource fair. It's a good opportunity to educate voters on it too, and our voter guide and all that. I, I'm.
So we're doubling it. I think that's fair.
So, we go for with option B. That's what we're doubling, right? So.
We're more than doubling.
Yeah.
Okay.
So option B, so we get the language written up for, as option B, I think that would be a good pass for.
For the three thousand. Okay. Veteran, uh.
Elderly.
Elderly, yeah.
And that's gonna, that's more complicated.
I think if we look at historically on what has been done or proposed, we saw the va, the assessments rise even more than they did in twenty twenty.
Yep.
So, we should go up at least as much as we did in twenty twenty and.
Can you tell me how many elderly in town are, um, eligible?
Uh, right now, I can. I have so.
Forty-two? No.
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine elderly people?
Yep, you have nine at eighty-five thousand, eleven at a hundred and forty thousand, and nineteen at a hundred and ninety thousand.
Okay.
Oh, it says here total exemptions is forty-two, so, so I was curious.
Where?
On the bottom of the, on the bottom of that chart. I'm in second tab on the one I'm looking at, I guess.
Option A, option B?
Nah, yeah, yeah. I went to the elderly tab, so, okay, if you're not working that, it's fine. Too many tabs going on today.
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry.
You know, you, you definitely wanna give it to them. They don't have kids in the school and they're, they're still gonna pay that full tax bill.
Yeah, I mean, they're just really, I did put on here, see.
Thirty's going up, though.
So, you know.
Positive.
It was.
There you are.
It was fifty, eighty, one twenty-five, and then it went to eighty-five, one forty, one ninety.
Where are we? Uh, we, huh, we were, where am I?
She's on the top of the first tab, all the way top. That's why I got confused. She has a whole other tab for elderly exemptions, all the form.
Yeah, I'm like, sorry, this is what I do all day, you know?
Can we have, can we have a separate tabs next?
I would lose my mind.
I play numbers all day, um.
Okay.
I mean, you could go lower, but you're not gonna really help these.
No, we wanna, we wanna help them, so.
Yeah, I.
All right, I'm, I'm with that. I'm on that.
So let's write it up that way too then, and.
Okay, so we'll write it up, um, going to one twenty-five, one ninety, two forty. Um, which follows the assessment. Okay, perfect.
All right.
Then.
Which option is that?
Anything else? That's C.
Okay, thank you.
Um, anything else that you know you don't want? Or do you want me to just start the language?
Change on that?
On the twenty-six, so you're talking a cent and a half? Perfect.
I, I think we need to see all the warrants written up and make a decision. We're gonna go, I think everything has a value there. Everything is important. And we already know that the budget committee is not gonna be able to support the firefighters, even though I still, you know, they don't have to support it, but I should go to the voters, the voters make a decision.
And are we looking at the un, ambulance, the general assistance, health agencies, those coming from unassigned, or do you want the dollars figured out on tax impact?
Generally do them from unassigned.
Right.
We do, because they're generally ones we don't wanna hit the taxpayers on if we cannot.
I think we should keep the same approach we've had in the past.
Okay. With a better explanation. The table talk, table talk, table talk. I challenge you to copy something. You like table talk? Can we serve cocktails?
Yeah, can we?
All right, I mean.
Where, where you doing this, I don't know.
You're gonna have to record it, so you might get a cocktail too. That's gonna be our.
No, but wasn't there a show already called that?
Table talk.
Table talk?
Nah, I don't think so.
It's not gonna be The View, I'll tell you that.
All right, so that's enough on the warrants for today.
I'm done.
We just have to make sure we come on the second and.
Apologies.
Ready to go.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah.
A lot of work between all this other stuff.
It feels like it should be later than nine thirty, right?
Well, we have few, yeah.
I'll be working from home tomorrow.
Okay.
For you.
So we have, let's see. Next is, um, the PO for continental resources. So, um, obviously this is a, this is a request from IT. I'm gonna abstain, but this is a PO that's in the budget for thirteen thousand, two seventy-five, fifty-one. It's, uh, about eight hundred dollars less than it was projected. And I need, we need approval to proceed.
Warrant article from last year?
This is, this is in the operating budget.
Oh, it's in the operating budget?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is the maintenance line for all the equipment throughout the town.
And it's an approved item?
Yep, it's in the budget.
Were we discussing it because it was less than expected?
No, because I pulled it out of the consent, cause I'm IT and I can't vote for it, and I didn't wanna leave it in consent, so. But it has to be approved by the board. So I need, I need someone to make a motion and second and approve it.
I make a motion that we approve the already approved budget item of the IT maintenance line. That is six hundred dollars less than it was projected in the budget last year for operational included in the default.
Continental resources.
What's that?
Was it six hundred or?
It's eight, almost eight hundred dollars less.
Oh, almost eight hundred dollars less. Please revise my.
I don't, and not, and this is not the, this is not the budget committee. Should not go back and try to cut it again, cause I, this was special.
Oh, please.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made by.
You amended it now, her.
From Ms. Pasky, seconded by Mr. Leary for the discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstain, motion carries three zero one. And I don't know who can sign this, cause I can't.
We can. Send it over here.
Let's see where you said, you can sign it. The senior member.
Okay.
All right. Moving on to town administrator report.
Um, if you go on to the sliding portal, you will see that there is a link to the auction for the twenty Lockmill Drive. This is getting a lot of views.
Sure.
Um, a lot of interest. Um, they are looking at Wednesday, November nineteenth, from one to three, having an inspection over there. Lots of people have signed up. We have just sent, um, all the final documents, um, to be approved by legal as to, um, like the purchase and sales for when it, um, eventually we get to that point. We just wanna say this is gonna close December fourth. So December fourth is gonna be the last day. It'll, everything's on their site that tells you what the rules and regulations are. Um, and, and I think, I think somebody's gonna get a really nice property. Um, it can be fixed up. I mean, you know, Kevin Brown, our road agent, has been through it. Matt, um, Osborne, our building, um, inspector, has been through it. With some, some work, it'll be a really nice home. Then, uh, I put the October trustee of trust funds report um, for your information, uh, below. Wanted to let you know that there is an upcoming, um, public hearing for the CIP at the planning board. Um, and that has been, um, put on the town, uh, website. I'm hearing that there's some conflict with a focus group at the school board. Um, there's nothing we can do. People can't, I, unfortunately, they, CIP has to have the public hearing that night so that we get it back, so that they can be at your meeting, the first meeting of December. And people, I, I get it. It, it'll probably be a short public hearing that maybe they can make it over to the school. Um, I also put on here, um, so there's a notice to the public hearing, November eighteenth. Um, there's one of the people that we're reaching out to for the resource fair is the United Way. United Way of Grand and Ashra does serve Litchfield. They are, um, an organization that we give money to in the health agencies. They are having, they're trying to think of new ways to create, so they're having some really interesting events. Um, karaoke, bar, a pub bar crawls, I mean, trying to advocate alcohol, but a lot of really neat events. Um, so I put that out here in case anyone's interested, um, in attending. A couple of them look really neat. And that's, um, oh, I did wanna tell you, so I've had a lot of complaints about Page, uh, Road and CBH and, um, Talent and CBH and people not being able to see, to turn.
Yep.
So I did send an email, um, to DOT District Five Office.
Oh.
I'll wait for a response, but.
So that's not something we take care of? It has to be done by the state?
Did, uh, Kevin did as much as he could, but that's state right of way. Um.
So they better get on that then.
Well, at the end of Page, that's the Wilson property. That's the, the bushes over there.
That's, that's gonna be torn down.
He did.
Hill there, right?
That's gonna be torn down, right? Further than that because it's another property owner is not.
What's the one that just went to Heritage? That, um.
It just, I don't know, I haven't kept up with Heritage.
The old house that was, like, almost.
So, it's, for unlocked, yep.
It used to have beautiful last.
Yeah, he did, he did like seven feet or eight feet of it going down the road.
Yep.
But then he said he couldn't do more, I don't know why.
Why has the line of sight all of a sudden become a problem?
Bushes.
Overgrowth.
Overgrown, and so, um, people are having a difficult time.
It's private property? Oh, it's state.
It's state has to deal, yeah.
It's a state, right? So, I'm waiting to hear back, but just in case you hear anything, I did contact.
One of those quarters that, that house is being pulled up, I think it's.
I did contact.
A whole house is coming down.
Yeah, but it's a little further off, off of, uh, Charles Bancroft, set the next road up.
And he did the.
The one that was bought by the.
Bullcrest.
On Talent.
Talent and Page, so the house is on Talent, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
At the end of Talent and C B H.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And those bushes have been there for a hundred years.
Hundred years, they're lilacs, and then they got that lilac disease.
Lilacs, and they've been there for, uh. I mean, that's, that hasn't changed much.
No, okay, so I would think that they tear those down when they tear the house down.
What?
The lilacs.
They tear, they'll tear down the bushes and everything else when they tear that house down.
They're not gonna tear the house down.
Yeah, that's the one that's gonna be tear down, torn down.
The one on the corner of Talent and three A, the white one?
The one that's the old, old, old house that came.
But I thought that was on three A, I thought that was a little further, first road.
I think so, the one that's like, you can't see it, and it's got a a leasing in it, and it's, it's been condemned, and isn't that the house?
Yeah, it's, it's not right on the corner, it's, you go up Town, it's the first left, if you come up.
It's the first house on the corner.
Count's Bancroft.
Alright, I, maybe I'm talking out of school, but I don't think so.
That's my cousin's house, they're not gonna tear that down.
The one that's, does it have a lease? A leasing, a leaser there, no, then it's a different house.
No, it's up, it's one street up, on the, it's on Talent, but it, it's on Talent, I thought.
It's on the page.
The one that, sure, yeah, uh, yes, that's one up, yeah.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, that's the old Smith house.
Oh, alright, 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 I thought it was, I thought it was that house.
I can't remember that name of that road.
Because behind, yes, it is, because behind that is.
Okay.
Was Mike's property, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
And what's with Page Road, that's the one that's always been dangerous to take a left, right?
Yeah.
That's always tough.
Both those roads are tough.
Londonderry did a study on that, and they're watching it, even though I see the death reports at N R P C, I hate it. But they need to do something, but it's not.
I'm sorry, if, if I, if you send a request to D O T, right to the district office, and we're municipality, we should get a response.
Oh, I agree, you should get a response.
Grandest staff.
Great, put a light on one oh two, will you? Alright, let's go.
Okay, I'm done.
It's not our town, right, that's, that's the problem.
Alright, select, we'll move on to select reports, um, we'll start with Rec Commission, Mr. Leary.
We meet Wednesday night, no meeting tomorrow, but it's better than today.
Alright.
Um, last meeting, we just were doing, um, usage approvals mostly, um, still haven't figured out what they're gonna do with the floor at Dara Hall, uh, Talent Hall, and, um, that's about it.
Alright. Uh, Ms. Queenen?
Me. Oh, boy. What do you mean, oh, boy, who's?
Wow.
Oh, she turned on me.
She's got a little slap at you over there.
It's not even a big report tonight. Alright, SIP, you heard, we met on November third, we reviewed, uh, every item in detail, uh, it's been updated, and we ranked everything. So, and and again, the public hearing is, uh, being set for the planning board before it comes here. Economic development met, we did not have a quorum, unfortunately, cuz we could've approved the report. While there, they made a couple of more edits, uh, Laura Gandia had appeared at this meeting, which we were glad, we ent, we put her edits in, they're all done. We just need a meeting, and hopefully, we can get four out of the seven to attend, so we can just get that out of the way. Um, I will work with you, we have to set up some kind of a survey, just a general email, I'll write up the draft email, just to submit candidate dates. I don't know if we need cable, I can just say, who showed up, here's the motion approved, you know, kind of thing, I can do the minutes, so we don't have to worry about that. Alright, so that is done, um, N R P C, we have our monthly meeting this, uh, next Wednesday, November nineteenth, that's a full commissioner meeting, so we'll have. Uh, D O T there and the Federal Highway Administration there as well. So far, we're getting our E P A funding, and we are getting our dollars from D O T, so we're happy to keep that going. Uh, last is the P F A S committee, we meet November fourteenth, so, uh, their final report draft, I, I will look at, and if they approve it, I will. I think I'm just gonna download it and upload it to our portal, cuz I can never get them to send it, even though it might say draft on it, but at least we'll have it. Uh, that's all I have.
Okay, this is Plan B.
Um, the Heritage Committee meeting is next Thursday, and followed by the two hundred and fiftieth Celebration Committee meeting. Um, the agenda has gone out, or is going out, um, minutes have been created, um, like I said, we have, um, we have all the people we need for that, and another. If you're interested in the two hundred and fiftieth, please come to that meeting next week, I believe it will be here. As opposed to the fire station, or is it gonna be at the fire station?
Next week?
Yeah.
It should be at the fire station.
Alright, it'll be at the fire station, it's a better place for it, because it's a lot of people.
What day is that?
Uh, Thursday.
Thursday.
Thir- Thursday, um, the Heritage Committee usually goes about fifteen, twenty minutes, and then after that, the two hundred and fiftieth.
Okay.
Um, comes right on after that.
Thank you.
I had, um, conservation last week, which was really fun, um, they're a very rowdy crowd, they're also looking for a couple more, um. A couple more, um, people to join the committee, uh, not as members, but as alternates, um, that are interested in conservation and aren't afraid of a little bit of hard work. Um, they talked about the Dara Pond Mill Foil Treatment, which they had people back out there raking. Um, I asked about swimming back in Dara again, and, um, they're talking about getting more testing done, so we might actually have swimming at Dara Pond again. Um, they've closed up and buttoned up the community garden, they did, um, trash pickup. On Saturday, they picked up twenty-three bags of trash along three A between Pine Crest and Hill Crest. They want you to know the ticks are still out, um, and people were getting ticks while they were out there, it was actually a beautiful day on Saturday for it. Um, and then after that, they went from there to the Dara Dock, and that dock has been pulled, and is up on the dock, and we ask that you please leave it alone. Um, and they moved the, continue to move the swans, and it, they're finding a, um, an in, a decrease in, in geese, in geese remains at the, at Dara Pond, so.
So, it works.
Yeah, oh, and also, there was another thing that, um, I wanted to bring up, is that they, they did do the, um, evaluation of last year's. Um, wa, uh, goals and ambitions, and it was a huge two-page, two and a half-page document. They had done all but two of them, and they're gonna work on creating their new list for next year. Um, and then they looked at already their Q R codes, um, and I asked for those numbers. It's like six hundred and sixty volunteer hours that the Conservation Commission has put in thus far this year. Mowing, building, cleaning, weed whacking. They've done a huge amount of jobs that have made all of our areas just much, much.
And that's just a lot of those, there's a lot more that they do.
Yeah, I would say so.
There's a lot more that they do as well, like Jason went, um, the, the intern that came that we got a grant for, um, he got a grant for. Um, asked him to show up at the state meeting, so he went and did a presentation of, of what this girl had accomplished, as far as all the Q R codes. That now are all over town, that show all these historic pictures and everything that are just beautiful. I know they brought it once here, but now that it's completed, it's just, it's just a beautiful work, and it was a combination of historical, um, commission, this intern and the conservation group. And it was just, it's really great, we're gonna do one at Bush, at, uh, De Rocha's, and we've already got, I think it's, um, one of the sisters is doing a, um, a historical pictures and everything of what the farm looked like through the.
You should share that presentation.
Yeah, we should, we definitely should.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just did it on conservation, he just did it on conservation, but it'd be nice to put on the town report.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, they, they did a beautiful in the kiosk, um, that's just like, it's a, a, like a bronze, it's like a really nice color, like it looks historical, the color that they used for the material. Um, and it's got all of the historic sites of the muster field, and, um, there's just, you, you go up there with your phone, you put in the Q R code. And it says you are here, and then it brings you around the muster field, and it just shows you all pictures of like the town, the school that used to be there, and where the trolley used to go, and where the ferry went across, and.
Interesting.
It, it's really stupendous, yeah, so, I mean, that's, it's just really fun to go there, and I used to think the conservation was work, and you know what, it's all play. They have, they do a great job, it's really fun to be there.
Is that it? Enough?
That's, that's all I did, was get to sit there and listen to what they did.
Alright.
Helped a little here and there.
So, I had, uh, school facility meeting, um, there hasn't been one since the last meeting, we have our next one on this coming Thursday. Um, Budget Committee, uh, joint session's been held, uh, last week and this week, so it is meeting on Wednesday and a meeting on Thursday. For reviewing the school budget, where the focus is right now, and I suspect the meeting on Thursday will be school budget focused.
We have two places on March.
Um, I won't be able to F I C on Thursday, there, you know, that, most of the members can't, cuz they're on the Budget Committee too, so.
Yeah.
But they asked a meeting, um, and that's it for me. I do, would like to open up the floor for another public input, if Mr. Parker wants to come forward again at, uh, nine fifty-one. Any parting comments, feedback?
Notes. Yeah, Mike Parker, twelve Nesmith Court, a couple of things, a, a quick look at the eighty-one pages of, um, of evaluation by property. There's about a hundred and nine that are e- either equal or less than.
Thank you.
So, there is either, either one or less than one.
Out of how many?
You know, eighty-one pages, so, it's tough to tell.
Eighty-one pages.
Out of eighty-one pages.
About how many's on a page?
There's three thousand four hundred and forty-two properties.
Three thousand.
So, a hundred and nine out of three thousand four hundred and forty-two.
It sure ain't, it sure ain't thirty-three percent.
And some of those, and some of those ones are in clusters, um, it was kind of interesting, some of the ones are in clusters, and some of the less than one are in clusters as well. But I didn't scan over to see who they were, um. The one thing I wanna talk about is the, uh, is the veterans' tax, okay, whether it's three or four or whatever else. It, it doesn't make any difference to me whether it's three or four, what makes a difference is how we sell it and how we tell people, so that they're not surprised, when all of a sudden it pops up.
Right.
We oughta tell a story.
Mm-hmm.
We oughta tell people, and if we want it to be four, we oughta tell them we want it to be four, and here's why, and then we oughta listen, and if people, if people raise the flag and say no. Then, you know, it's not gonna fly, but I think you can get.
I don't think we have time.
We don't have time to do it, unfortunately.
Well, that's the other thing.
We don't have time to say, we want it to be this, but we'll take that, and then, and then what if we lose it all? I, I can't, I can't risk the veterans losing it all.
Let that be a lesson for next year, because I see all this, this, I feel like sometimes when I see the budget and stuff, and I don't understand how things work necessarily, but sometimes it's like. When I was a kid, writing the book report Sunday night, it was due Monday.
Did that a lot.
Yeah, yeah, I did that a lot, too, um, but I, you know, I, I, yeah, I wish we had more time, because it really, to build consensus and to build understanding and to listen to concerns takes time. And we're kinda, we're kinda compressed right now. Um, the one thing I would ask, though, is, we talked about the veterans, totally and permanently disabled, and elderly, is there an overlap there? I would think that.
There is some.
A lot of the totally and permanently disabled are also elderly, which may.
May help them more.
There may be an overlap there as well.
And if there is, the, the, there is, you know.
Yeah, I mean, if there is, then.
Some of them probably won't be, because they're, you know, we have younger disabled veterans as well.
They can get the elderly exemption.
There are two different things.
Yeah, but, um, some of them hopefully are getting both, I hope they are.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, but I think doubling it, honestly, is.
If you have an eighty-year-old veteran, it could be, yeah.
I think it's fair.
And we also need to make sure that they.
And it gives us room to, to do it again, to help more later, because the max is four.
Mm-hmm.
And, and I think that we have a lot of citizens that are veterans that are also still really suffering right now.
Oh, I, I agree.
And I, I think it's, I think it's hard, and I really don't wanna risk losing the seven fifty, that if they say no, you go from, from four thousand to seven hundred. If, if you, they say no. And I just, I just don't wanna risk that, personally.
Understand. That said, okay, all the things we're doing now, for two thousand twenty-seven, we oughta look at be, working with this level of interest and energy in April. May, June, July, you know, build that, build that consensus, build, let, get people talking about it, get people thinking about it, whatever else, as opposed to at, what I feel like is at the last minute right now. And that's it, I don't understand how things work necessarily, um, but there's, there's gotta be a, there's gotta be a better way.
I really wish the state did it differently, right, cuz I think there's a lot of time that passes between March and the vote. And the, the budget gets passed, the budget has already really started, right, cuz it starts in January, you're approving something that's already started. And then you have to wait until November to understand the tax impact of what you did.
Mm-hmm.
It, it's just, it's, it's a funny process.
You back into, you back into it, basically?
Yeah, it's, it's crazy.
I mean, and I'm looking at everybody that's talking about taxes right now, they're just looking for places to cut.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and we didn't know until we got our tax rate back from the state, what the impact was gonna be.
Mm-hmm.
And who was gonna affect the most, I think, I think we knew.
About two weeks ago, yeah.
That's when we, that's when we got the.
Well, it's not an impossible problem, it's just one that we've got, we gotta figure out.
We work real hard.
We gotta figure, we.
We do work real hard.
We gotta do better, but thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Seeing no one else, I will close public input at nine fifty-six. That, this at this point concludes our business meeting, we do have a short non-public that we have to go into, which, which we will come out of just to, um, adjourn. So, I'm gonna make a motion that we go into non-public under RSA ninety-one A, colon, three, Roman rule two, section C, matters which. Discussed in public would likely adversely affect the reputation of any person, other than a member of the, this board, unless such a person requests an open meeting. This exception shall extend to include any application for assistance, or tax abatement, or waiver of a fee, fine, or levy, if based on the inability to pay or poverty of the applicant. Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, sorry, Kim.
No, you got it.
So, second by Ms. Queenen, all in favor, say aye.
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 So, so four zero zero, we're in non-public, like I said, we'll be coming out just to, uh, adjourn, have everybody have a good evening, and we'll see you on the next.